If not, can I ask one of you to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item five, which is public comments. The mayor reads the following. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak on items that are within the city council's jurisdiction, but not listed on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any responses to public comments will be included in the next city manager's update and will be posted on the city's website. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot take action or engage in detailed discussion on any item that is not on the agenda. The council may briefly respond or refer the matter to staff for follow-up. All right, we've got a whole bunch of speakers today. Let me try not to butcher any names here. Nitu. 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 You're special. You gave me Alicia. Yeah.
You just pushed the button.
It's working now? Perfect, all right. Wow, this is a big crowd. I was not expecting to come in with this crowd, but I will go with it. So, good evening, Mayor Andy Sue, councilmembers, and all the members present here. Robert, you're here, this is amazing. My public comment might offend some people, but let's go for it. All right, so this is, my name is Nitu Singh. I'm a long-term resident of Mountain House and actively involved in our community through various initiatives. First, I respectfully request that tonight's meeting be recorded and full audio, with full audio and made publicly available. Because at the last October 22nd meeting, where three residents, including myself, raised concerns about the hiring process and requested an investigation, the recording was muted for the first 25 minutes. This is deeply concerning because the Brown's Act guarantees transparency and public access to meetings. Muting the audio undermines public trust and violates the spirit of law. The fact that the October 22nd recording has 277 views demonstrates that strong public interest is in this issue. So I'm here to follow up on the October 22nd comment, where I asked the council to investigate the hiring practices and share the findings on regarding two positions where residents questioned whether due process was followed. Three residents shared personal experience with the hiring department, notifying that after submitting application, they received no communication, only a rejection letter two months later. Our concern is that city officials may be handling matters without due process and instant operating on personal references. For example, even public comment should be acknowledged and followed up by the city. Yet, after the last council meeting, not a single resident who raised concern received any response. This failure reinforces our concern and demonstrates the seriousness of the issue. Let me be very clear. If city officials believe they can discourage residents by ignoring requests, they are mistaken. I, along with other residents, will continue attending each council meeting and raising concerns. If the city council declines to act on my request, I am prepared to file an official complaint with the California Civil Rights Department for discrimination in hiring practices. I have yet not shared this matter on social media, but I have already received messages from residents sharing similar negligence in response. If basic tasks like hiring and responding to public comment are not managed, I hope our multimillion-dollar projects are allocated and handled with due diligence. Thank you, thank you for your time today. Any questions for me?
Did we not send a response after last month?
Not to a single resident. I confirmed all three residents who raised concern in the last meeting, and that was October 22nd.
Well, I was actually asking the city manager.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We did fix the tape, the recording, where there were the errors, and we are following up on the other issue.
You will follow up?
Yes.
Because she said she hasn't received anything yet.
Okay, let me clear one more thing. The published meeting on the YouTube is not fixed. City did share with me the recording of the streaming, but the YouTube video, I looked into that video before coming to this meeting at 3:20. I was at Dr. Ratan's cleaning, doing my dental checkup, and I checked that video again. That video is not fixed. It's muted for 25 minutes, and that's a violation of Brown's Act.
Okay, moving on to the next item, but please make sure you respond.
Yes.
Next, is it Adia? Adia? Adia Palduri? You can move that down.
Good evening, Mayor Andy Sue and other council members. My name is Adia Palduri. I'm here to talk to you about a serious safety concern that the people of College Park are facing every single day. First, let me ask you a question. What is the most odd village in Mountain House? College Park, of course. The spread land around Central Parkway makes it quite unusual and peculiar. As interesting as it is, crossing to the other side of Central Parkway is a real hassle, especially if you're just four or eight tall. Why would a kid need to cross Central Parkway? I'm glad you asked. For College Park, our school is on the east side of Central Parkway compared to the people who live on the west side. So, kids who live on the west side that wish to walk to school have to cross Central Parkway. Central Parkway was designed to be the freeway of Mountain House. So, cars go fast. Kids walk ever since third grade. How would a third grader be able to navigate the speedy traffic? Also, cars face problems. When entering Central Parkway from the internal road, drivers have to watch three other sides for incoming cars. Also, drivers have to watch four sides for other pedestrians. That's a lot to pay attention to. This chaotic intersection could easily be organized with stop signs and pedestrian crossing lights or a traffic light. We can add stop signs stopping cars on Central Parkway and pedestrian crossing lights. We can also do traffic lights or anything else that will efficiently organize the traffic. Even if, um, even if one is already granted, it hasn't been implemented. Plus, it needs to cover the turn at that area. There's also a slope at that area. Everyone, everybody who opened the door for the signing of this petition, um, signed it. We need change. These intersections are accident-prone and chaotic. However, we can easily fix them by doing a simple action, putting a stop sign, traffic signal, or pedestrian crossing light at these intersections. And, um, here is the petition. Here's the petition. And, um, do I have to like, do I have to put it, do I have to give it to you? Um, um, any questions?
Thank you for bringing this concern to us.
Thank you.
Our traffic report tonight will notice, note that the intersection of Central Parkway and Nazar Goli has a traffic signal that has been ordered and we expect it in January or February, correct, Kusen? Yeah, so that project's been in the planning stages for a couple of years, and it should be completed by spring.
Great. Next is, um, Anvi and Sanvi? Anvi and Sanvi? Come on up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and members of the community. My name is Anvi Giradi, studying in sixth grade at Julius Cordis Elementary, and this is Sanvi Sawalmat, studying in ninth grade at the Emma Chatches High School. We are here on behalf of the Seva Diwali Food Drive, a community service initiative that unites families and organizations across Mountain House and San Joaquin County. Seva Diwali means service through light. It is a nationwide campaign supported by more than 364 Dharma organizations and community groups across the United States. Every year during the Diwali season, volunteers collect new and non-perishable food items such as rice, cereals, canned vegetables, peanut butter, and many other essentials to support local families facing food insecurity. Our goal is to celebrate Diwali, not just with lights, but rather by extending the spirit of giving to our neighbors in need and spreading joy. Here in Mountain House, the 2025 Seva Diwali Food Drive runs from September 20th through November 20th. We have established six neighborhood collection centers located in Cordez, Hanson, Cuesta, College Park, Wickland, and Hanson. Local families have volunteered their homes as drop-off locations, ensuring that every resident has the opportunity to participate conveniently. Last year, our San Joaquin County team collected 9,206 pounds of food, partnered with 10 local organizations, and distributed donations to 11 beneficiary groups that serve families throughout the county. These efforts demonstrate the strong civic spirit and compassion that divide, that define our community. We sincerely thank the City Council of Mountain House and all the residents for continuously supporting volunteer-driven services initiatives that strengthen our bonds and promote collective well-being. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share about the Seva Diwali Food Drive. We invite the city and our community members to join us again this year in celebrating the spirit of Diwali, the service, compassion, and unity. Thank you.
Thank you. The other three, let me see. The other three will do comments we'll do during the item. Okay, moving on. Item 6.1, representation from the Board of Supervisor for the county's 175th anniversary celebration. Chair Paul? Are you Paul? I'm kidding. Chair Paul. Come on up.
Supervisor Rickman, you coming up with me too, or? Okay, so I just want to say thank you. So this year, we've been celebrating 175 years of San Joaquin County. And so what we've been doing, and it was my brilliant idea, is to do a road trip to each one of our cities. And obviously, you guys are our newest city. And so I know that the culture of how we've gotten to 175 years is very important, but it's also neat to see you guys, you know, being established as the first year of being a city. I know a couple of folks here in the audience from the city of Stockton. I did eight years on the Stockton City Council, and I know what it takes. It's hard to follow these acts that we just had, right? We had Brown Act violations by y'all, and then the young ladies here wanting to change traffic signals, and then people doing the God's work and trying to get community involvement through food drives. I mean, if that's not what America is based on and our freedoms and what's gotten us to where we're at today. We do have some guests with us. We have our county administrator, Sandy Regalos, so she helps us run San Joaquin County. San Joaquin County, for all of you that don't know, we have 800, and I think it's 8,000 people. And you guys are one of the three fastest-growing cities in our county. You guys, Lathrup and Manteca. So, we also have, Brenda Kylie is, where is she at? In the back there, she's the county, Deputy County Administrator. And then Brandy Hopkins, Assistant, sorry, Assistant, sorry, I'm messing up here. So they give me a list, I can't even read the list, I apologize. And then our Director of Purchasing, Concepcion, is in the back. Thank you for coming, Concepcion. Rochelle is our Clerk of the Lord, is in the back. Chelsea is her assistant. And then we have Katie Piper, who's our PIO for the sixth floor in the back over there, and his aide is Scott Tyrell. But I just am glad to come here, being from a city council myself and representing San Joaquin County. The pride that we have and the stories that every one of you has as an individual is what makes San Joaquin County the great place that it is. We all have different stories of how we got here, but that's what is the basis for the great country that we call America and not only San Joaquin County. So I want to congratulate you guys on, this is our last stop, last but not least, right? Is the thing that's the most important, and how you do that because you are providing quality of life on this side of the county. It literally took me, we don't realize how big San Joaquin County is. Took me 40 minutes to drive here from the city of Stockton. You know what I mean? And that's with good traffic. So I want to thank you guys all for being part of San Joaquin County. This is his district, so I'm from the city of Stockton. I want to thank you for the 175th anniversary. Lots of great stuff going on in San Joaquin County, and we have your back. This is his district, so whatever, you know, he's been a Tracy council member and he has a lot of pride in his community. So I just want to say thank you for having us this day and our paths crossed with your electeds too. And I think that's important, that the camaraderie and the friendships that we have in San Joaquin County is what makes this place great. So now I will hand it off to Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. And, you know, we have a saying in San Joaquin County, and the Board of Supervisors, you know, on my district, fifth district, so fifth district, best district, right? So, and good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to address the council. We appreciate it. Now, tonight, we come together for something truly special, to celebrate 175 years of growing greatness in San Joaquin County, and to honor the people and communities who have carried that story forward. Since 1850, our county has been built on hard work, resilience, and the spirit of neighbors looking out for one another. And here in Mountain House, that spirit is alive in everything that you do, from your outstanding schools and your vibrant neighborhoods to the sense of pride that builds every community event. Mountain House may be one of our newest communities, but you've already become one of the strongest threads in the fabric of San Joaquin County. And then it's funny, before I came here today, I got a text message from someone here in Mountain House showing me the new lake that was operational, so that's, that's cool. Now you just need to put some fish in it, and then I'll be over here. So this year, we celebrate across the county, mostly, you know, in fifth district, in Tracy, and Ripon, and Escalon, recognizing the unique history and hometown traditions that make each city shine. And now we close our anniversary right here with all of you here in beautiful Mountain House. So as we look next, look to the next 175 years, Mountain House represents the very best of that future. Mountain House is welcoming, innovative, and deeply community-minded. But most of all, tonight is about people. It's about the families who chose Mountain House as their home. It's about the volunteers, our educators, first responders, and local leaders like yourself who help this community thrive every single day. So thank you for being a part of this remarkable milestone. Thank you for your partnership, your passion, and your commitment to building a brighter future for all of us. And not just for Mountain House, but for the entire county of San Joaquin. So God bless San Joaquin County, God bless this beautiful city of Mountain House, and God bless the United States of America. Mr. Mayor, we have a certificate for you because you don't have enough of them, so we have some more.
Do we come down there?
It's your house, you can tell me where, you can tell me to go outside, I can tell you whatever you want me to do.
Hey, give me an anniversary gift.
Amanda, you need a chair?
No.
Yeah, let's go around his head. Wait. You got it, all right.
It is.
All right, we're back. The next item is a proclamation proclaiming November 2025 as Sick Awareness Appreciation Month. I'm going to read the proclamation and present it to my friend, Mr. Raj Singh. Let's see if, can't do this without, with my glasses. All right, proclamation, Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month. Whereas the sick community has been a part of California for more than 125 years and continues to contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic life of the state. And whereas sick Americans serve in public safety, the armed forces, education, healthcare, business, agriculture, and community services across the region, and... Where was I? Sick residents of the San Joaquin County and Mountain House uphold core values that include equality, honesty, hard work, and service to others. And whereas sick Americans in Mountain House support local schools, community events, charitable programs, and outreach efforts that strengthen neighborhood connections. And whereas November is recognized in California as Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month to promote understanding of sick history, traditions, and contributions. And whereas the city of Mountain House values the presence and engagement of sick residents and acknowledges their ongoing role in building a supportive and inclusive community. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Mountain House proclaims November 2025 as Sick Awareness and Appreciation Month and encourages residents to learn more about sick heritage and the meaningful contributions of sick Americans in our community. Dated this 12th day of November 2025, signed by the mayor. All right, come on up.
Everybody come on up.
Okay, Andy, Andy, why don't we all go up here?
All right. All right, can you guys get everybody? Amanda, now you're going to have to go on the stool. All right, after you've done. Amanda next, and then Ryan. Photo, shot screen. Photo, yeah. All right, rapid fire.
Mr. Singh, would you like to say a few words? Raj? Yeah, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, we have two people speaking briefly. Myself and Mr. Waer Singh would speak after me. You stole my thunder a bit earlier with the proclamation, but it's all good. I have, I have similar words to say.
Yeah, say the same things.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager, City Staff, my fellow residents. On behalf of the sick community and our young people, I am deeply honored and humbled for accepting this proclamation today. As you have said, Mr. Mayor, Sikhs have lived in this state and country for over 125 years. They have worked, lived, and contributed to this society, being farmers, doctors, plumbers, electricians, business people, engineers, nurses, lawyers, elected officials, public servants, law enforcement officers, and armed force, in armed forces. Sick principles of liberty, equality, and justice are deeply aligned with the American ideal. And that is why Sikhs thrive in... And that is why Sikhs thrive in America. In his recent speech that I saw online, Congressman from Arizona, Mr. Frank, Trent Franks, said, and I quote, "Before there ever was America, the Sikh people had already embraced and proclaimed the principles that formed this nation, that there is only one God, one caste, and we are all created equal," end quote. If there is any foreign people or land more aligned with our nation and our constitution, that is people of Sikh faith, those of us who have taken the oath in public service, including myself. And I see my friend here, CSP Officer, full Colonel from US Army. We are proud to be an American, not only because we make a good living here or we have built our lives here, but also because our faith is in alignment with the Constitution of this great land. Again, I thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for this honor.
Okay, Mayor Sue, council members, city officials, my community members, and especially all the children, good evening, and satvriyakal to my brothers and sisters. That is the short sick reading. I am delighted to be here. It is my first time at this event. I've been in Mountain House for about 40 years now. Prior to that, I had lived in South Bay for three decades. I am an educator. I'm also a software engineer. And I am really delighted to see, especially the young ladies who spoke here because they gave me hope. They gave me hope, all these children who are still present here. They gave me hope because this level of civic participation is needed to build a better community, a better city, a better county, and a stronger nation. The proclamation is sincerely appreciated. Mayor Sue, you have already read the key words out of there. I don't need to repeat. My brother has also said a few additional words. Sikhs have been here for well over 125 years. The first documented or first written reference to Sikhs being in California dates back to 1899. There was an article in San Francisco Chronicle that sent something about people with turbans arriving at Angel Island. So we are not new kids on the block. We've been here for quite some time. We are part and parcel of the fabric of our economy, our community. Sikhs felt San Joaquin County to be their home when they started arriving here. They left Angel Island, some found their way to Berkeley, some went to other parts of the Bay Area, but many came to Stockton. The first Sikh house worship, which is called a Gurdwarah, is a California historical landmark. It is in Stockton. And the Sikhs found San Joaquin County to be home because of its diversity, its openness. And they had dreams. Back then, India was a colony. It was still under British rule. And the freedom and the liberties that they felt here, they gave them this much felt appreciation for what it takes to be free or what it is like to be free. And they started forming organizations which left a profound impact on the history of Southeast Asia. So we really appreciate the county, the state, and now our home, Mountain House. This proclamation is meaningful. It is very valuable, and thank you for taking time to do that. I know you have packed agenda. I don't want to ramble on and on again. Thank you so much for doing this. Much appreciated. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Youth Action Committee update. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Sue. Normally, the Youth Action Committee meets the second Tuesday of each month at 7:00. Because of the holiday week, we did not meet. We'll be meeting on November 18th, next Tuesday at 7:00 in this location. So at this time, there's no official report, just hope since this will be aired that all the youth come out next Tuesday, November 18th, 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Lammersville Unified School District update. Stephanie Olson? Stephanie Wallace Olson? My gun.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Sue, council members, Mr. Pinkerton, Mr. Barker. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening as always. I'm going to start my report out with some enrollment numbers, and I'm going to do it slightly differently this evening just so that you can get a different data point that I think you will find interesting. Overall, as of today, or well, actually as of last Wednesday, when the report was given at the board meeting, we have 8,097 students total in the district. And I'm going to break that down by the grade levels. So we have 323 TK students in the district, 383 kindergarten students, 508 first grade students, 488 second grade students, and 561 third grade students. So for grades TK through 3, that's a total of 2263 students. Fourth graders, we have 589. Fifth graders, we have 612. Sixth graders, we have 615. Seventh graders, 679. And eighth graders, 673. So from grades 4 through 8, that's a total of 3168 of our student population. And then finally, at the high school, we have 713 freshmen, 655 sophomores, 582 juniors, and 615 seniors, for a total of 2565 students that are high school. So we're growing kind of at a steady pace right now. It's not jumping up too high. But as we know, this is Mountain House, and that can always change really quickly. So as far as events coming up, the event I think I'm going to choose to invite you to this week, and there's multiple events, and I'm not going to take all the time. But next, November 20th and 21st, so I believe that's Thursday and Friday. At 6:30 PM, the Mountain House High School Dance Program will be doing their annual show. And this is a really wonderful show. It has all the styles of dance. It celebrates multiple cultures and genres of dance. And these are students that are doing the dance pathway at the high school so they can earn a cord for this. And it's a really, really wonderful performance, and so I encourage you to attend if you have time. And our fall sports have wound down, and it's been a really exciting year for girls' sports in particular. Girls' water polo, for the first time ever in the district history, made it to a playoff game, won their first playoff game, and then had a really great time up at Davis, playing the 15th ranked team in the nation. We did not win that game, but it was a wonderful experience. And the team is celebrating, you know, coming so far and making Mountain House High School history. Girls' volleyball also had similar results by making it into the playoffs as well. And then I think girls' tennis is doing all right. They're actually still going, I believe. And so we'll defer all the celebrations until we have a full report on that. But they're having an extremely successful season. Doesn't matter what league we move up to. They bring it and they compete. So we'd like to wish them all a congratulations. And then the boys' football team, they got to do a play-in game. CIF, for the first time, has decided to do these, like, high school playoff bowl games. And last Friday, our team went to Toque for their first ever bowl game. And it was a really exciting game. They lost 44-51 in overtime. So kind of a heartbreaker, but everybody played really well, and we want to congratulate them as well. Last week also, on an academic front at the high school, I don't recall the exact number, but many students got their white coats for the HOSA pathway ceremony. Students were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society, and that's a large part of our student population and their interest. And so we're happy that we can provide that for them. Also, as a tradition in our district, the school day after Halloween, our teachers come to school, but the students don't. And even though Halloween was on a Friday this year, they still had that following Monday, November 3rd, as a professional development day. And it was a wonderful day for staff. They got trained by a renowned expert in AI, by Ben Songdras, and learned about how to use it wisely in, you know, school districts for multiple, in multiple ways. And then finally, I just wanted to, last time I was here, I believe, I mentioned the CASP scores in science, that we exceeded expectations, improved by 5%. A lot of it is credited to the focus that we've done on science and creating a new curriculum that really engages students. And so we beat all of the schools, like San Ramon, Dublin. I mean, we own science. And there was a great presentation at the board meeting last Wednesday by Assistant Superintendent Heather Sharp. And I'm not going to give the whole presentation here because that would take a lot of time. But I do want to reference that for people to go watch because it has lots of great slides and presentations and data. But what I will say is that our district showed improvement again. Overall, for the district in science, like I said, we were 65.9%. In math, 71.74% of our students are achieving standard or exceeding the standard. And then 75.7% of our students in English Language Arts are achieving the standard or exceeding the standard. And if you watch the presentation, you'll be able to see sight by sight how each school performed. But overall, we're very proud of our students and the work our teachers are doing. And not just, we have many goals as a district, you know, to get, we're the top-ranked school in San Joaquin County. Now we're shooting to be the top-ranked school of, you know, all of the Bay Area schools near us and maybe even beyond now. But that's not all. You know, that top number matters. But we also care about those students who, in the four rungs, the ones that have not yet met the standard. We want to get them to approaching standard, to meeting standard. And we saw a lot of growth with students that maybe last year got a 1 on their score, move up into that 2 range, which is a significant achievement as well for them. And so we're moving students in the right way, and that concludes my report.
You know, I like to collect the data on how many kids are in what grade. For the ninth grade, the freshman year, could you give me that figure again?
Yes. Yeah, 713.
How many?
713.
Also miss a senior, if you could.
The senior, 615. You're welcome. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Item 6.5 is presentation on Public Safety from Public Safety. Let's start with 6.5.1 rank, safety report. Are you Chris? You are Chris, right? Why can't you guys just click for him? Yeah. I'm not that nice. They all left.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Officer Roy Cole with Public Safety Team, here to present to you my team's statistics for October 10th through the 30th. All right, diving right in, we had four trespassing calls, three suspicious persons, two traffic accidents, eight suspicious vehicles, five alarm calls, and two traffic control calls, with the total calls for service at 557. Now, as you can see, paired with some of those statistics, there's numbers in red, which actually represent last year's statistics for this month. We move on to school area observations. We had 46 helmet violations, 15 dropping off kids in the road, and 84 kids not using the crosswalk. We had 68 park restroom security checks and 390 security check city wine. Now this moves on to community events. We had the pleasure of taking part in the Safe Trick or Treating Event here in City Hall, where Captain DeFrenchie and Officer Woods handed out candy and stickers to all the children. We also provided traffic control for the Day of the Dead block party. It was a pleasure to be there. It was great to see everybody come out. And as well, I took it upon myself to take a couple bags of candy with me on Halloween, on patrol, and would stop at various large groups of kids to get some community engagement there. As always, we are encouraging the Vacation House checks. With the holiday season upon us, there's going to be a lot of people traveling. So it's an instrumental part in home defense, along with your traditional security system. Now, I will like to add, you do not have to be specifically on vacation or away from home for an extended amount of time to sign up for this service. If you feel that your home would benefit from an extra patrol check, you're more than welcome to call that number displayed above and see if you meet the criteria to sign up. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions for me?
With the kids at the schools where they're dropping them off in the middle of the street, I see that's a little bit higher, but I see that all the time. That's something that is very scary. Are we stepping up patrols at the schools for those reasons? And I guess that would go into my question, are you guys able to cite when this happens? What do you guys do when you see this?
So as far as, that would be a moving violation, which would be the sheriff's office's responsibility. Although I have noticed a large amount of vehicles parking in red zones and things like that obstructing the crosswalk, which is something that we would be able to cite for when we move forward with the admin citations. I know that we have gotten some strides in getting dad tickets set up, but what follows that is obtaining equipment and training.
Yeah, because I definitely notice, like, if you tell them here, all they do is go down the street. So I think the only thing that will kind of deter that behavior are tickets. If they have to pay for it, maybe they'll stop dropping their kids off in the middle of the street.
Right, and as of right now, we can't get to every school every day. So these numbers that we're seeing are only from ones that we are observing actively. And I'm sure that number is much higher in actuality.
Anything else? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Sergeant Kevin Johnson. Did you used to play basketball? Yeah, that was you, right? Yeah, Sacramento, yeah.
Okay, how about that? All right, so good evening, Mayor, and City Council and city staff. Sergeant Kevin Johnson here with Mountain House. It's been a little while since I've been here, so made it a little easier when I cleared out a little bit, so you didn't have quite the pressure. First off, I want to start off with, if you see some of the officers roaming around, that might have scruffy beards, that's No Shave November, cancer awareness. So it's for this month only. So they'll go back to clean shaven after that. I chose not to participate. My wife doesn't really like it. All right, so they got this broken down, did a calls for service, and the black number is this month's statistics, and the red number is last month's. This month, we had 1,013 calls for service, as compared to 863 last month. Reports were basically, were actually the same. Traffic stops, 134 this month, 113 last month. You'll notice that the citations issued is down a little bit. We had one of our motor officers gone a significant portion of this last month. And, but he's back, so I'm sure that number will go up. Stop sign violations, 23. Same thing. It kind of correlates with a body down, means numbers are down. And then parking citations, nine versus 16. This month, we had five physical arrests, and as compared to six from last month. Other assaults would be things would, maybe they actually didn't get booked into the jail. So that would be, uh, would, would qualify what those other assaults would be. Vehicle accidents, twelve, uh, as compared to fifteen last month, and we had, uh, one, um, impaired driver. Eighteen property crimes. That, just because there's a window there doesn't mean that that's what they were, but, uh, property crimes could be anything from, uh, you know, items, uh, like petty theft or, um, or like this, uh, auto burg or something like that. And then the rules of the road, please don't ask me anything about the, eat these scooters and stuff, cause that is a whole nother world in and of itself. So anyways, um, and then the last one, oh, community outreach, same thing, Dewali. Uh, you know, every, uh, event out here is, I tell people about this all the time. First off, this is, uh, the best assignment I've had in my career. Uh, this community is amazing and every event that goes on out here is magnificent. I mean, they're huge, right? I mean, it, it, there's nothing without less than 2,000 people. Uh, it's incredible. Um, anyway, so, uh, as you can tell, I really enjoyed out here. Uh, this was, this saddens me. Uh, one of our mounted patrol horses, uh, passed away this last month. Um, he was, uh, actually a really, uh, cool horse, um, something that's not said in here as I bought him, uh, in 2019, brought him to the unit and sold him to Sergeant Manor, who had him up till then. His name was not Patrick before we brought him to the office. I actually named him Patrick after the sheriff. So that's just something I wanted to add in there. Anyways, that, um, he'll, he'll be sorely missed. All right. Any, any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Let's go with Mountain House Fire Chief, Mar, Mar, Marty.
Good evening, Mayor Sue, Vice Mayor Tingle, City Manager Pinkerton, and staff. I'd like to present to you tonight the fire public and safety report for October. So in October, we had ninety-six calls compared to last year at eighty-four. We had fifty, actually, there's, it's supposed to be fifty-nine EMS calls, five fire, nine calls for services, eighteen false alarms, three mutual aid, and two traffic accidents. Um, in the month, we were very, very busy in the month. This October, November, December is very busy for us, um, at the fire department, especially, um, in the, in the community as well. Um, we had a new hire academy and we also had a badge pending and a promotion ceremony, um, at our new station two. Uh, we had a lot of our, our, uh, city council members and staff there for that, which was great. Uh, we're actually getting ready to start another small academy for three new members to bring us up to about 95% of staffing and hopefully come 2026, we'll be able to bring on a couple more, um, specialized positions for the, for the department. In fact, we have two of our new members here. We have Engineer Vallow and Firefighter Nan, and, uh, they're, they're on duty tonight and it locks, this is their second night on duty. Um, and, um, and also since they're here, and we don't typically get Chief Fulmer here at the meetings, but I like to say thank you to Chief Fulmer and the staff that, that train our new members, that bring them on, that prepare them to be able to have them come onto duty and be able to serve our community here in Mountain House. Um, he has four more weeks of, uh, another academy coming up next week and will be having our, uh, pending on December, I want to say 11th, yes, December 11th at Station Two as well. And then we had our 10th annual pancake breakfast in October, which is, uh, something I've been, I would look forward to, um, being here for four years and it, it never ceased to, to amaze me on how many people come out for, for this pancake breakfast and, and the staff does an amazing job as well as the community. Um, we had a little over 800 people come to this, uh, um, this pancake breakfast. Um, it was a little challenging because school was out, so we had some of the kiddos weren't here, so, but, um, the, the community, um, showed up. Um, we actually, actually going around, I was talking to a couple who used to live in Mountain House. They moved to, um, Discovery Bay, um, and, but their kids have been coming to the pancake breakfast, so now they're still coming here as a tradition as a family. So we would just like to, to thank the community for their, their continued support. Halloween, we had, I'm just going to name off a, a bunch of different things that we do. We had, um, the pancake breakfast. We had numerous Dewali ceremonies in which the fire department participated in as well as most of the, the community. Um, we had the Halloween, um, time here at the city hall. Um, and, uh, we just wanted to re- remind our, uh, our citizens of the new, the time change, time change your batteries in your smoke detectors. Um, if you need assistance, please let us know. Um, and if there is any questions from the council.
Disco.
Uh, what time is the pending ceremony on the 11th?
Six.
Six. At Station Two in Lakeside?
Yes.
And that's open to the public?
Correct.
Thank you.
And one other thing is be ready for Santa parades coming up. We have another community, so we're going to try to work them into, to that schedule in December. So we're planning for that too. Mayor, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. What's next? Let me see. Item seven is the city council consent items. I'm supposed to ask you guys if any items are requested to be pulled from the consent calendar? I don't see anybody. Can I, do you have any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as prepared.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Let's move to item eight point one. Public hearing for the red light camera enforcement program. Who's son? Who's son?
Queenie Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Uh, this item before the council is regarding the red light, uh, camera system for public hearings. I would like to start my slide with the benefits associated with the new system, camera system, because it raised awareness and prevent unsafe driving and protect pedestrians, bicyclists, and other drivers. It also can help our law enforcement can focus on emergencies rather than routine stops. And also you pay for yourself throughout the, I mean, citation revenue. I'm going to provide more information in the later slide. And it will prepare for future safety tools, including speed camera system. We don't have to invest additional equipment in the future. It's ready for any future expansion. So why now? Because, um, statistically, running red light causes very serious crashes and injuries. And it will provide a safer and more reliable road supporting our resident. And this will, this effort will strengthen the city's commitment for the traffic safety. And also these types of automated system securely upload photos and videos and our city's workload will be reduced significantly. And also clarifies of new law will make our local implementation much, much easier. This is new law, uh, new legal framework, State of Bill 720, which will be effective January 2026, will introduce the following key, uh, changes. In the future, from the January, uh, red light camera violation will be treated as like a parking ticket. That means that it will eliminate any, uh, court, traffic court activities. And also it will remove DMV point. And also the system will capture only the vehicles, the license plate, no more driver's face. Throughout this new program, the major burdens associated with all the violations will be very light in the future. This is a very important, uh, component of the program, which is called cost neutrality. The first, the vendor install, operate, and maintain everything. They are going to capture all the photos, videos, even vandalism, even some accident caused by some, some other, I mean, issues, any damages will be maintained and fixed by the vendor. Cities that is not involved in any maintenance, zero. And if revenue is less than the monthly invoices, only the collective amount will be paid. I'm going to provide us a little more details later. If revenue exceeds the monthly fees, the remaining balance will be used for any item for city traffic improvement. Any unpaid balance at the end of the agreement, let's say, uh, so of sixteen months, will be forgiven and based on the cost neutrality, the clause. So this graph indicating how that cost neutral works, the, the bottom one is indicating the month, the vertical line means the USD, the dollar, the citation revenue. And green line indicating that the number of states citation normally going down as people start understanding, oh, there is a citation chance, I need to slow down, something like that. The red line here indicating the fixed monthly fees to the vendor. With some reasons, like a school break or seasonal issues, if the revenue, our state citation number is very low, that means the red areas, negative revenue, even though it's a negative revenue, city is not responsible for that portion. That's of course neutrality. That means that no general fund will be made in the future, no general fund impact at all. We would really want to make sure that one. Can you? Uh, I would like to bring up, uh, contract terms to, to make this very, uh, transparent. Even though overall the procedure is, looks great, but there's a special terms in our contract. $120,000 for each, uh, camera system if city cancel within sixteen months. However, the termination fee will be decreased by $2,000 every month. So that means that fifty-nine months, if some reason, with some reason, city just asking, we don't like this one, please remove, or we are suppo, we are supposed to pay $2,000 as part of the termination fee. But after sixteen months, there is no fee at all. And also there are a couple of requirements for the city as well. This, this chance is very low, but some reason, city staff keep failing to approve the very clear violation is more than 10% of the citation we are receiving, that might affect our contract, but this is not going to happen. There's no reason to turn down or fail to approve the citation when it's very clear violation. And also it's a day, uh, when we choose the locations, it's a data-driven assessment. We cannot simply ask the vendor, I like this spot, please, uh, install camera system. It, it, it's not going to happen. So it must be selected based on data-driven assessment. So the current system before SB 720 next year, the other cities collect $500, but however actual, the revenue, the cities receiving is only $110, $240. The rest go to the court system, the county. Once new law comes in, SB 720 next year, a citation fee will be $100, but it will come to the city one person. So this is the next steps. Once the council approved this program tonight, stepway is going to start data-driven site evaluations. And we are going to start community, community outreach as well. And we will make sure that the program fairness and effectiveness reviewing the future. And then December 10th, next council meeting, we will come back for contract award. So January, uh, even though we installed the program, we will still provide 30-day warning, uh, period to the resident. That means that any resident make some violations, they will receive only the warning the first 30 days. After 30 days, they start to receiving actual citation. Could you click? The CCA compliance, it's a very minor accessory structures, so that's why city will submit a CCA notice of exemption once this program is approved. Effectiveness. Senator Mantica, Senator Tracy actually started this program from 2024. Um, the Senate mentioned that in the previous council meeting, uh, we contacted Mantica Police Chief to ask how that program works for Mantica. And I personally went to Tracy and Mantica site. It's a big investment and it's working really well. We only received recommendations. And also recent data showing that there is a enhancement in the public safety based on statistics. And the significant reduction in intersection-related collision as well. So it's a proven effective as a long-term traffic safety solution. Next. This is a potential site. So city will focus on only the major city corridors and arterial road. For example, Mountain House Parkway, Great Valley Parkway, Central Parkway, Grand Line Road, Byron, Anoada Mustang Way, One Susten, et cetera. So once we conduct a data-driven assessment, we are going to choose specific location. And also in the future, as traffic pattern change, we might add more and more based on our contract. As such, city recommend, uh, the council opening the public hearing to receive, uh, input from our resident and after resolutions, authorizing initiation of the red light camera enforcement program and identify potential camera installation locations. Next. I can answer any question?
Any council questions? Tingle?
I have a question. Thank you for your report. Under effectiveness, with your interviews with Mantica and Tracy, uh, could you share if, uh, if there was any information about any, uh, key learns that they've had or were there any suits or?
Yes.
Any downfalls that they've had that we could be aware of and, uh, make sure that we don't run into the same loopholes or under effectiveness? Could you be a little bit more details of their findings?
Yes, city staff can provide more information, but so far, we, what we are seeing is that it's not hundred citation, it's a thousand citations for each cities. So I can provide a little more updated information after this council meeting. At the same time, we got a really good input from Police Chief with Mantica. So even though it's a very effective, because they started before SB 720, for the court system, they assigned a sworn officer. The person spending a lot of hours to go to the, the court, the appealing process, that's a lot of hours. We trying to avoid the types of very, I mean, the big burden on our staff. That's why we were waiting until the new law will be effective. So that's a good comment from other jurisdictions as well.
Okay, so, excuse me. So the Senate bill that went into effect will deter, uh, any, uh, flashbacks from lawsuits or that type of thing, from losing the cameras?
It's a little similar to the parking, uh, ticket. The people can, uh, submit some appeal, but there will be a cost for them. It's, it's not, it's not free. They will be charged for the specific amount, let's say $25, the first, uh, appeal. The second appeal is going to $50, something like that. But more detail will be decided with our vendors. But they're, based on other cities, especially the East Coast is different. It, it's not, it's very similar to SB 720, so we asked some vendors how that works. So we asked some vendors how that works with other state. The challenge, the rate for appeal is very low because this system allowing the photo as well as the video, it's very difficult to challenge because it's too obvious. That's why the vendor allowed everything and the city staff will have a chance to take a look if that is valid or not. So there will be several steps to verify the violation. For example, another example is that people might challenge the city, I'm trying to just to make a right turn, not the left turn, but the video tells that it's not the simple right turn, there was a violation. It will be verified very carefully. That's based on all the input from the vendor or other agencies. We trying to make sure that our burden on that administration process will be minimal, very minimal.
Thank you, you did answer my question. The end result is that the discrepancies against using cameras very low. There's not that much pushback from, okay, thank you.
Any other council questions? Green?
So when we have the cameras up there and they take the flash, part of it isn't, it involves the lights being synchronized.
That's right.
So the city, are we still responsible for the synchronization of the lights? And I know you say it can't really be kind of protested. However, if our lights aren't synchronized with the cameras, so as I was coming here this evening, someone ran the red light in front of me. So I know there's a need for it, but my concern is that it's not, it's foolproof and that we don't end up with a financial responsibility because there's some loopholes where people can say, well, it looked like, you know, I didn't have enough time to make it through the light. That's exactly what the, what has been happening in previous times in other cities where they were able to get out of the red light ticket because the lights weren't synchronized to give them enough time to get across the light. So that's one of the concerns. And then I, some of the other concerns that I had with it, I think you answered, but I just want to make sure. I know it sounds real good and we need it. I just want to make sure that we're not going to end up with any type of financial responsibility.
That's right. That's why I shared the financial component, which is very important. Because even though the program is really good, we don't want to create, but we don't want to create a huge financial burden for the long time. That's what we want to make sure. That's what we have worked with our legal counsel here. And also our deputy city manager also helped to identify some of the issues. We are working all together as a team.
Any other council question? No, that's a no. At this point, I'm supposed to open public hearing and announce the public is invited to make comments on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. And then I'm going to call Sierra Martin Elwarda. CME, can we just call you CME?
Oh. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sierra Martin Elward, and I am the president of the Rotary Club of Mountain House. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Rotary's mission is to serve our community and to support projects that improve safety, well-being, and the quality of life for all of our residents. Over the past year, our club has partnered with the city on several public and safety initiatives. And we've seen firsthand how important intentional preventative measures are for protecting our families. So I want to highlight something very meaningful to me. About a month ago, our public work director, Kuzan Kim, visited our Rotary Club and he was our guest speaker. He spoke about the traffic patterns, growth, and the increasing pressure on our roadways. What struck us most was how he approached every challenge through the lens of the Rotary's four-way test. Is it the truth? Is it feared all concerns? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? Red light running is a leading cause of several collisions, and these are preventable tragedies. So as Mountain House continues to grow, automated enforcement is a proven tool that reduces dangerous violations, protects pedestrians and families, and allows our law enforcement officers to focus on higher priority needs. So I appreciate everybody's thorough work, your data-driven approach to identifying potential locations, and Kuzan's diligence in ensuring compliance with SB seven twenty vehicle code two one four five five point six A. I appreciate, and for these reasons, I respectfully encourage the council to approve the staff's recommendation and move forward with the program. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to, if there are no other public comments, we're going to close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve eight point one public hearing for red light cameras enforcement program.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Martingal?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Let's move on to eight point two, another public hearing to affirm the intent to close three existing at-grade rail crossings. Take my glasses off of this. And construct two new at-grade crossings consistent with California Public... Where was I? California Public Utilities Commission Applications A two five dash zero five dash zero zero two and zero zero three. Kuzan?
Yes, good evening again. This item is regarding the CPUC railroad crossing project, public hearing. So main purpose this presentation is regarding the, is to receive the public input on the CPUC, California Public Utility Commission Rail Crossing Applications A twenty-five dash zero five dash zero zero two and zero zero three. And we want to support closure of three existing crossings and construction of two new crossing, which will be provided more details later. And authorize execution of related coordinations and compliance actions. Next. This is the project overview. Application for two project were filed on May eighth. And the main jurisdiction is CPUC. And rail line is for Union Pacific Railroad, UPRL, Tracy subdivisions. So again, the main purpose is to enhance the safety and circulation and reduce railroad conflict point from three to two. And we want to support long-term mobility consistent with the city's master plan. Next. This is the CPUC proceeding so far. CPUC, CPCU, CPUC Administrative Law Judge is Le Goldberg. And we had pre-hearing conference on August seventh. And site visit was conducted on September fifteenth. And also Rail Safety Division, RSD, responded on July seventh, saying that no protest on these two projects. And virtual status conference was held this Monday, November tenth. And developer party is Mountain House Developers LLC, which is called MHD. Next. So three closures for the existing crossing, railroad crossing at Calso Road, Milepost seven seventy-four point two zero, Henderson Road, and Wickland Road. We are proposing two, two new at-grade crossing at Great Valley Parkway, Mountain House Parkway. I'm going to provide more details of these components. Next. This is the location of the closing, the crossings. The yellow dot here indicating the existing greatest separated crossing at the Central Parkway, the bridge over crossing. And two green dot indicating the new railroad crossing. And three dot here indicating three existing railroad crossing to be closed. Next. This is indicating the first one, Great Valley Parkway and Calso Road. Red dot indicating the existing Calso Road. That will be closed as the new northbound Great Valley Parkway open in the future. Next. This is, this is showing the Henderson Road closure in the future. So on the exhibit, the Mountain House Parkway will be extended to the north of the Byron roadway. And then eventually the existing, the route, which is shown as here, blue dot lines, the approximately fifteen hundred linear feet will be converted to the proposed route, the red dot line over there, a little over four thousand linear feet. So one of the main reason for this, the route, new route, is that the existing Henderson Road closure does not have enough capacity as we grow the traffic basically in the future. We want to enhance our safety. Next. This is a little more closer shot for the Henderson. The green area indicating the future new crossing as we close the existing crossing at Henderson. As you can see, Henderson Road does not have any capacity for any trucks or vehicle in the future. So the green one indicating that we have enough capacity for the increased traffic volume. Next. This is Wickland Road closure. So as we close two crossing at Henderson and Wickland, so existing the blue dot line in between the Mountain House Parkway and Wickland is approximately forty-eight hundred linear feet, but the detour will make a little over eighty-six hundred linear feet. However, that will increase our safety. So next. Especially the Wickland project, the crossing, you might recognize this symbol, the signs. There is a very stiff, very stiff elevations. So even my personally, I saw that several trailer stuck in the middle rail. This is very dangerous situation. So we want to enhance the safety issue by closing that, especially that specific Wickland railroad crossing. So that will allow us to incorporate more than warning devices per the CPUC General Order eighty-eight dash B and seventy-five dash D. That will improve overall safety because we are incorporating more advanced system for our communities. Next. Inter-agency coordination. This city of Mountain House is a lead applicant and overall project coordinator. And CPUC is a regulatory oversight and issuance of crossing orders. And again, UPRL is a partner agency for crossing design review and construction coordination in the future. And Mountain House Developers is a developer applicant providing cost to share and design coordination. Next. I want to say that this is one of the most critical components of today's public hearing. Even though the city provide a public notification throughout newspapers, city website, and social media, but we really want to provide this information, project information to the adjacent property owners, especially six property owners. We prepared very special notification to each property owner. So we mailed the letter as well as we approached each property and provide the door hangers so that they can get enough information because the transparency is the key for these types of project. Next. CCA compliance is covered under city's program environment impact report for the Mountain House Master Plan and Specific Plan Two CCA Addendum. It is why no additional CCA action is required for this space. Next. As such, staff recommend opening the public hearing to receive the public input on the two projects and also adopt a resolution affirming the city's intent for two new crossings and three existing crossing to be closed. And authorizing the city manager or designated to take all actions necessary to implement the intent of the resolution. I can provide any answer you may have.
I have a question. It's on the last slide. It's on the last slide, the recommendation. I did go over there and look at the various crossings. Is the recommendation going in this order where it's going to be Great Valley and then the next one would be the Mountain House Parkway? The next, this is the order of construction?
So can you go back to the exhibit indicating the locations? One more, one more, one more, one more. Yes.
Great Valley Parkway is going to be?
Yes, Great Valley Parkway is a new. Mountain House Parkway is new.
All right.
All three existing at Calso, Henderson, Wickland will be closed.
Okay. But, okay, so you did answer. The first one that would be done would be Great Valley Parkway.
That's right.
And I looked at those and it looks very, it looks very good. That's really going to open up traffic a lot.
That's right.
That was very good. I didn't realize all that's involved in railways because I did find out that once a train track is ended, never really gets, you never can dig them up.
That's right.
But I'm sure it'll be a good job. But that'll really ease our traffic flow going from the lakes over to Byron Highway.
That's right.
And the timeline on that, I'm excited about this because it does look like an excellent project. While the timeline, if all goes well?
So we, as I mentioned, we provided all the information. We had several meetings, including the site to visit. So we expecting final approval from CPUC sometime April twenty twenty-six. And then construction might start two months or several months later. But we need to coordinate the process with UPRL as well. But our, the next step, we are waiting for CPUC's final approval on all these project sometime spring next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions from the council?
I have a question. I just wanted to make sure. So how many more stages of notification are we going through? Because I know you guys have done a lot to notify residents in that area. Are those notifications done or we still have to do more? And we haven't had any body protest?
Yes, we provide the public notification and very special letter, even door hanger. So if the resident asking some more question, we can answer any question, anything in the future. But we can send some more notifications as a reminder in the future once CPUC approved overall project before the construction. That will, we will have a more chance to provide the notification to the resident. But in between, we are, we will always welcome any additional input from the resident.
So I was really asking because as long as we've done our due diligence, then this project can move forward?
That's right. That's a very critical component, as I mentioned. Is the transparency is the key for the very successful railroad crossing projects.
Let's see. Any, if there are no other council questions, we will open public hearing and announce the public is invited to make comments on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes. I have Mr. Abraham Akhtar.
Okay, so I provide a copy of the transcript for each of the city council.
Okay, so I provide a copy of the transcript for each of the city council members. So to Mountain House City Council and the city manager, my name is Abraham Akhtar. And I oppose the city council's proposal to permanently close the Henderson Road Railroad Connector. And I demand that the city council not move forward with this plan to permanently close the Henderson Road Connector for three reasons. The first reason is the Henderson Road Connector currently serves over five thousand eight hundred residents per day. And I would know because my family owns nineteen six oh one Henderson Road. And you can only, you can see it, but data is also collected. So over five thousand eight hundred residents per day, they are served. And we talk so much about celebrating the city of Mountain House and, you know, the community San Joaquin County since eighteen fifty. That connector was built in eighteen seventy eight by the Central Pacific Railroad. So it's been around for a hundred and forty seven years. The second reason is, and the city council, they have each a copy of this. Currently to go from nineteen six oh one Henderson Road into Mountain House is a mere sixty feet. And on the map you can't see it, it's a dash, it's sixty feet. This proposal will increase it to twenty seven thousand feet. So rather than being from that end of the room to this end of the room, you're pushing us all the way out to Byron just to get to the same spot, just to get to Safeway. This is an undue burden on residents and who's it going to impact? It's going to impact a lot of people. For example, Garni Construction, they just built this one or two years ago. This is going to impact them, they employ twenty five hundred people. Take Altamont Sports Complex, they have batting cages. It's going to impact them and all the residents in the area. And I'm also going to cite this case, there was a case called United States versus Town of Lack du Fambault just three months ago on August fifth. This was decided in the US District Court. They closed the public easement or public access for the residents. Fifty homeowners were impacted by this and the US District Court judge sided with the homeowners. And they said, the homeowners, and I quote, "The homeowners have an implied easement over roads to access their properties and the road permanently must remain open and accessible." So when you take it as a whole, given that fifty eight hundred people per day are using that connector, given the fact that businesses, residents, that includes us, people who use that, you're pushing us all the way out from a mere sixty feet the size of this room. You're pushing it to five point one miles one way just to get back to the home. You're talking ten point one miles each time. I am a teacher, I'm a history teacher. And if you're going to say go from the property to inside of Mountain House, this is going to be ten point two miles each way, ten point two miles. So please, in terms of the notifications, we received a letter in the mail from MHD only two days ago giving us two days to prepare, only two days. The city is not providing adequate notice, they are not providing adequate notice. So please do not close the Henderson Road Connector, do not close it. Keep Henderson Road open, let's keep Mountain House connected for a road that has been open for a hundred and forty seven years. And I'd appreciate any questions or concerns or comments from the city council.
I may ask more questions later, but let me get the other, other people in here. Michael, same last name. Why is wrong with that feedback? Hold on for a second, hold on for a second.
You guys speak right into the mic for it to stop.
Yeah, what?
Speak right into the microphone.
You think that's the problem?
It is, yeah.
Okay now?
There you go, yep.
Dear Mountain House City Council and Mountain House City Manager, my name is Michael A. Akhtar. I'm owner of nineteen six oh one Henderson Road Tracy, California, which is property that is spent three hundred and fifty feet in length and will be directly impacted on my personal property Henderson Road. And I oppose the closure of Henderson Road Connector for three reasons. Number one, the property I own nineteen six oh one Henderson Road has a three hundred and fifty feet frontage on Henderson Road. If you close this Henderson Road Connector, I will have no access to my property. Number two, I have planned to build one home and several ADU home. Even I asked San Joaquin County, I'm willing to build ten unit low income housing, but those two are just wait. So bottom line, county give me so many option, even just that one. He say, hey, Mountain House had nothing to do, you are still in Tracy. So I'm careless, for me, this meeting is kind of okay. So number three, I received letter from Mountain House Development LLC about proposals closing of Henderson Road. You cannot close county road for the private benefit. Then I had ladder, history and detail in the bottom, you guys can read on. Thank you very much.
You used more than fifty eight seconds. Next we have, is it Rabia, Rabia? You guys all have the same email too.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rabia Akhtar and I am the owner of nineteen six oh one Henderson Road, which is the property that will be directly affected by the proposal offered by city council to permanently close the Henderson Road Railroad Crossing. I bought this property in two thousand nineteen. I like the location because it has easy access to the Mountain House. And it is a mixed use property, meaning I can open the business or even build the house. Two days ago, I became aware of the plan of closing the Henderson Road Railroad Crossing. I object to the permanent closure of the Henderson Road Crossing because this provides direct access to my property. Therefore, I am requesting the city council and city manager to not close the Henderson Road Crossing, thank you.
Thank you, we have one more actually. David Sergeant, Sergeant.
Alright, so I'm David Sergeant with Mountain House Developers LLC. So Mountain House Developers LLC is a developer here in Mountain House and we're, we're responsible for building the new railroad crossings and closing the existing crossings out there. So we've, we've been working on this application for some time. And we need to build these new crossings to support the future development on the other side of Byron Road, including our residential neighborhoods and some of the other properties there. So Kusan did a great presentation to kind of summarize the, what's going on. And I just, I just wanted to share a little bit more information about the impacts to the existing homeowners there. Because there are, there are several homeowners in that area. There's the Akhtar property, which is on Henderson Road, very close to the Henderson Railroad Crossing. And then there's the De Maria property and the, there's the Sandoval Aguayo property and a couple others. So and I have, I have reached out personally to some of the other property owners out there. I've talked to the De Marias who are actually here tonight. They, they have some concerns about it, but not as, as a, I guess, severe as the ones you just heard. The Aguais who live next door to the De Marias, right there by the crossing, they're actually, long term, they're supportive of this because this is this, the movement of this crossing is going to reduce all the commuter traffic that goes through Bethany Road, right in front of their house. So anyway, so they're, you know, a family, they have two kids. So they're, they're actually looking forward to when all the traffic goes away. And just in the interest of time, I better just summarize a couple of their important issues. So the Akhtar parcel, it's a vacant lot right now. It's maybe an acre or so, not sure. But the current zoning is ag, but eventually it'll, it'll revert to, it'll go to industrial when it's, if it annexes into the city. So they might be able to do a house there as ag, but I'm not sure. You know, they did, they said they purchased the house, the lot in two thousand nineteen. So the railroad crossings that we're doing here, the closures and the new openings, you know, they've been in the master plan since nineteen ninety four. And so they, they've always been in the documents. So it's, it's a shame that when they bought it, they weren't aware of the planned closure because it's always been in the documents and many updates over the years. So there was opportunity for them to know that that was there. And as far as the distance to travel, it is going to be a little bit further. They are literally sixty feet from the crossing now. But the, the new direction, one of their exhibits suggested it might be like a five miles, but it's only like twenty five hundred feet, like a half mile is the increased distance that they're going to have to go to get back to Byron Road, so, thank you.
Can't see, if, where am I here? If there are no other public comments, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for discussion.
Andy.
Disco.
So I need some clarification here. I'm aware of two properties on the corner of Bethany at Henderson. One being one nine six oh, which is the larger of the two parcels, the other, which is on Henderson. The other being seventeen five seven one, which faces Bethany Road, adjacent to the construction yard. Nineteen six oh one shows us an empty lot and I've driven that road numerous times to do trash cleanup on the back of Henderson myself. And I'm trying to figure out what property sits at nineteen six oh one.
It's a six tenths of an acre vacant lot.
So you guys reside in the house with the dogs on nineteen six hundred, right? You're at nineteen six hundred? So your vacant landowners has future plans of development, right? And...
Whoa, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Well, it's the same property, so I don't care who answers.
You cannot talk to the audience like that, you need to bring them up if you...
Okay, I'm sorry.
So just as MHD is a vacant lot right now, but they have plans to build housing. Nineteen six oh one is also a vacant lot with plans to build housing. And I don't really see when you're saying, oh, it's not, it's not, or you know, there's issues with, oh, what about the traffic? Fifty eight hundred. And I know, thank you councilman for going out and seeing it yourself. It's a vital connector, it's been there for so long. It's been there for a hundred and forty seven years, which is a hundred years longer than the city of Mountain House. So it serves a lot of people and it does mean a lot to us because you can go and see yourself how many people, it's so much so that there's three signal lights to stop traffic because so many people use the connector. But if the issue is, well, is it vacant? Well, so is MHD, so is, which is specifically one nine three zero zero Henderson Road. That's also vacant with plans and ours is also vacant with plans.
But it's my understanding that once this is built, that Bethany Road will still continue to connect through to Central Parkway to whereas you're saying this is a permanent change where once MHD builds, once you guys build these ADUs in Agland, which, you know, is still to be determined by the county's zoning, right? It's nothing, nothing's approved, you guys haven't submitted any plans, there's nothing, you have no form of action where you say, I have multi millions of dollars invested in this ADU right now. I appreciate your investment in the land, I understand your future intent of use. But on paper right now, it's just as conceptual as what we're discussing tonight, right? Whereas this is a little further ahead in the plans though, whereas, you know, and it's been documented since ninety four that this was the intended future redevelopment. But my point being is Bethany Road isn't disconnecting, this isn't going to sever permanently, right? Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is going to connect back to what is now Central Parkway North, but will be changing to whatever name because of the fire emergency code, right Steve? What's the new name for the...
Correct, Toter Mall.
Toter Mall.
If you take, I think in the presentation, we demonstrated where the connector would be. So instead of connecting at this dangerous intersection where...
Yeah, loops through the back, it's currently being used as a dump zone behind.
It will actually be more convenient for getting back to Mountain House because you'll be able to connect directly into, you know, the extension of Central Parkway.
Where, where Mountain House Parkway goes into the new, what's the new street name?
How do you say it, Dave?
I'm going to have to say it ten times fast.
Toter Mall.
Toter Mall.
It'll go under Toter Mall.
But what's, what's the timeline of that if, if, if the...
That would have to happen first because remember we have our wastewater plant. We all need access through there, so we would not be finishing the grade separation until there's connections back to Central Parkway.
But the way it's going to work is once they approve the closure and construction starts, that means we sever the existing connections and it's not overnight that we flip over and turn the opening and the new crossing on the new grade that goes over...
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be cutting people's access off until we create the new access.
So it would be simultaneous a day over, a week over?
Well, basically the, the road wouldn't go away until there's a new access point.
Is that codified anywhere? Because I've been also doing my due diligence and looking in and also when you think about the plan itself, it's going in through residential. So what you're saying is that currently Henderson Road connects straight to Byron. It's a connector, that's why it's called the Henderson Road Connector. You're connecting Bethany and Henderson Road to Byron, it goes, it feeds straight in. But you're saying, let's take Great Valley Parkway and go straight into residential. When I'm thinking about the interests here, this heavily benefits MHD, which that's in their own right, that can benefit them. But you're taking a public access way from Bethany and Henderson onto Byron, which fifty eight hundred people per day use. And now you're trying to say, let's put that straight into residential. That's also a logical concern.
That's, well, no, it's light industrial, sir, so...
That's not correct, that's not correct at all.
So why are you going to be happy...
Point of order.
We would be happy to meet with this person afterwards because they're not understanding the...
I've looked at the general plan, I know, but if you can look ahead on the general plan, when you look going north Henderson Road, it's...
Instead of discussing with just one council member, why don't you meet with staff? You just got this a couple of days ago, we're not making any decisions today, maybe. Let's talk to staff and maybe they can clarify something and maybe it's not that big of a deal.
Two days is not good notice. This has been going on since May, why were we told two days ago in November tenth? When this has been going on since May? Why was that the first notice we got that this is the proposed closure? When this has been happening since May? To us, it seemed like this is all under the table, kind of shady work that MHD's been colluding with. This is just speculation, right? Okay, thank you, thank you that you're saying no, but it's speculation.
This plan was approved in nineteen ninety three.
And the connectors existed since eighteen seventy eight.
Well, the plan's been here for thirty six years and it's been on every master plan for the community.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying my questions, I appreciate it.
We'll, we'll follow up with you.
And please, in some way, because I've gone on your website referencing an earlier concern, the follow up, I hope is not just, we're going to discuss it later. I hope, please, you really take into consideration that there's a business, Altamont Athletics, there's Garni Construction, there's residents. And I'm just going to say this as an aside, when there's rains, in the rainy seasons coming up, I've done it myself where it's flooding, you're going back up towards Bethany and to save my own life, I've had to make a U-turn and use the Henderson Road Connector. I've had to use it because you know there's a wastewater treatment plant there, there's water sitting there. If there's an emergency and now we can't use that connector, you understand? And there's an emergency, hopefully not, we don't want anything to happen. And it's vital, fifty eight hundred people per day use it.
Thank you, thank you, Abraham. Let's see, any further council discussions?
Mayor, I do too.
Harrison.
Yeah, again, this project's been looked at for a long time. We've actually even have a judge that's concurred with, with the railroad folks and with Mountain House. And so this isn't nothing new at all, this has been on the books for a long time. And then for somebody to come up and say, oh, well, I got plans to build, show me the plans. Because I could show you the plans that we already have in place. So I, I think we just need to move forward on this, mayor, thank you.
How about you, Tango?
What I was going to say, a lot of...
No, hold on. Mr. Akbar, you're not, Akhtar, you're not, we're not recording any of this, you can't just speak from the audience, okay? Let us finish talking, we haven't even finished yet. Go ahead.
Thank you. My comment, as I was waiting, some of the back and forth did answer some of the questions, and one of them was that, as this project moves forward, the road would not be closed until there was an alternate road in place. I was concerned with the initial report that says over 5,800 residents per day. That seems like a lot of numbers, but as it says, as it goes forward, that's not, there's not 1,500, excuse me, 5,800 people passing that way each day. The thing that does concern me is that, you know, it's been on the books for many years, but your group not being notified, or the residents not being notified, but I feel confident that after discussion and understanding and, and talking with the city manager and staff, that you get an understanding of the project and what's going to happen. But my primary concern is that, if that road is closed, no matter how many residents are back there, their access to a fire and safety, and I'm sure that's been taken into consideration, but the first thing that hits me when it closes, are you going to put anyone in real and imminent danger? And I don't think that would be the point, but that's one thing that I would like to have cleared. But I feel confident in giving the residents on Henderson Road a timeframe that is reasonable, that you could sit down and talk with them, and not, we're going to get to you sooner or later, to mark an official date and time for these discussions to take place. Because when, personally, I feel that any time anything's going on with your home and your permanent residence, there is some anxiety and level of concern. So I would appreciate it, as a city, and as a council, that we get back with, that the group that are affected expeditiously, and meet with them, so everything will be put to rest. End of my comment.
Green.
I just have a clarifying question. Is it a residential? Are you guys living there, or is it a vacant lot? Because in your first presentation, when you first spoke, you made it seem like you were living there, like your house was on that area, but as your dad spoke and your mom spoke, it was clear that it was just an empty lot, that you have plans to, whether they're on paper or in your head, you have plans on what you wanted to do with that area that you purchased. However, it seems like, maybe with MHD proceeding with the plans that had already been put in place, that it might affect what your future plans are. So I'm trying to understand, is that your point? Because it's kind of a, you know what I'm saying, it's kind of like saying, well, you know, we had plans for that in five, 10 years, but this is going to affect what we had planned to do. And so it's just, it's something that you can't just now, all of a sudden overturn. And I asked Kusan, was everybody in, in his presentation, I wanted him to make it clear, their due diligence to this point on notifying the residents. Now, whether or not, let me, I understand you're, I understand you're passionate, and I feel you, trust me, but we have to look at it. There were, there was newspaper notifications, there, all the notifications that needed to be put out there, including door hangers and knocking on doors, that was done, and I don't know how come you're the only one that got missed. So, and now, it's clear why you're the only one that got missed, it's because you're not a house, it's a vacant lot.
Well, hold on, if you want to speak, you've got to come up, but, hold on, hold on for a second. I'm trying to...
I just needed it to be clear, whether it's a house or a lot.
But I'm pretty sure they've made it clear, it's a vacant lot. I want to summarize a little bit, okay? This, this closure was planned, how many years ago?
23.
Well, I think the last DIR was in 2004, but the master plan goes back to 1993.
But when you bought the property, when?
2019.
When you bought it in 19, you obviously didn't know that this was going to happen, otherwise you probably wouldn't have bought it, right? Well, turn, turn your mic on, so we...
Okay.
All right, yeah, we'll have him come then.
I mean, just to clarify, we, we reached out to all of the property owners in that area, MHD did, and they weren't able to make contact with this one owner, but I think once...
But they're here.
Instead of this back and forth, we'd rather sit down and discuss it with them, because actually, it's an enhancement to the property. You've got an undersized road that's falling apart out there in this point, and now we're going to be providing a direct connection to the rest of Mountain House, that'll be far more convenient than what's there now.
Is the direct connection really five miles, or is there a shorter connection?
No, they, they were assuming that we were just eliminating connection, which we can't do. We've got a whole part of town that's going to be developed, there's going to be hundreds of thousands of square feet of development in that area, that's all going to connect over to the extension of Mountain House Parkway, as Kusan showed in the presentation.
I guess I need to see the map again, but if the connection was half a mile, would that be more, would that be acceptable?
So I looked at the general plan, and based on the way, I don't know, can you actually pull up the general plan? That's what's really concerning me, so when you look ahead on Henderson Road, it gets very narrow to the point where it's just a line, and I'm not just, on the general plan, I'm not seeing it, I even have screenshots on my phone, I'm not seeing that connection. The other concern is when? So if the connector, the Henderson Road Connector is removed, the concern is that, well, there is plans, I know, or I'm assuming MHD has plans to build, but when is that going to happen? The real concern is when, and I, like how a council member mentioned, is that going to be within a week or day of each other? Is it going to be that the connection is made, the Great, the Mountain House Parkway connection is made, and the following day, the Henderson Road Connector is moved, or removed? To my understanding, I don't really have a timeline of when that's going to happen.
Okay, but, what happened?
It's not, it's not going to go away until the road's there. We have a, we have a $60 million wastewater plant that we need access to on that same road. Nothing, no access is going away.
So it looks like the Henderson Road Crossing and the Mountain House Parkway Crossing, that's half a mile at the most, or less?
Less.
So if you're, if that was open for you to drive there, that would not be a huge distance. Do you see the green dot next to your Henderson?
That's not the best drawing.
It's not the best drawing, but that's not very far.
So the thing is, so currently, and you, a lot of the councilmen have been out there, it's a connector, so you go from Bethany to Henderson to Byron Highway. Instead, you want to now go through what I'm assuming will eventually become a res, so you see, that's the photo right there. It's going to become, so these are good photos, instead of it going from Bethany to Henderson straight onto Byron, you want to now make that kind of U shape that you're saying. So you're saying, let's make this U shape and eliminate that connector. So this is actually going to be, if I'm being honest, this isn't going to be too good, because you have trucks, as we stated before, there are trucks, there's people. This connector connects Tracy and Stockton to Mountain House as well, and also Byron to these cities. So instead, you're saying, how about, let's go around here, go through, I'm assuming it's going to become residential?
No.
Let's go through a residential, and then it's going to, or, please correct me, so what will it become?
Yeah, this has all been designed with the fact that that area now is not designed for truck traffic. So you'll be able to go on to a, a street that's designed for industrial development, which is what the land is across the street from you, zoned for.
Steve, I think we need to meet with them, we need to sit down with them, explain. I don't see this as a five mile, this looks like a very short corridor.
It's, it's half a mile.
Half a mile. So let's, let's meet offline, we're not ignoring you, I hear your concerns, but maybe we can clarify this a little bit offline.
And just the last thing I can say, because it's mixed use, the county, in speaking with them, they did say we could make a grocery store. I'm not sure if you're aware of the Aria Market, which is just a few miles down, because it's mixed use, that has multiple uses, so if you're thinking it from that vantage point, we, we discuss it all the time, should we bring a grocery store, should we build low-income housing, should we put a 7-Eleven on it, because it has so many uses? In the case that there's a store right there on that property, you're now blocking its front access point. That's like telling Aria Market, we're cutting your access from the railroad, and now everybody has to go around, that's a legitimate concern we have, given the uses of the property. It has, it's an AU20 zone, and the county has listed these things that we can do. So I get, I understand everything you're saying, but also, we want to serve the community, so if we want to serve, and we want to build something like a grocery store there, you're removing actually the frontage of it, that's just a concern that I have.
Well, yeah, let's take it offline and continue to discuss this. I will let Sally come up and make a quick comment. Sally, who wants to be Sally today? All right, who's that with you? You turn it off.
I'm Sally Di Maria, this is my Aunt Toni.
Hi, Aunt Toni.
I live at 19690 Henderson Road. I'm the only house on Henderson Road.
Okay.
It will, I mean, I'm, I'm all for the new Mountain House development, all of that, I'm fine with the whole rower deal. My only concern is, being the only house on Henderson Road, I also have a child that's 10 years old, as it is now, she doesn't even like to go in our front yard, because of all of the strange cars that come down our road and park in front of our house, and we have a lot of illegal people, you know, dumping stuff on the road, what have you. My concern is getting in and out of my driveway. I already have an issue at the stop sign, because they do not stop at the stop sign. I've almost got nailed several times. And I also come in my yard with a truck and trailer, because I haul horses. My concern is, if the access road will go in front of my house, how am I going to get in my driveway? I won't be able to get in there because of the cars, they don't stop, they don't slow down. They speed down Henderson Road as it is, just to race their cars, and it's really unsafe, but if there was an alternate route that they can do, instead of going, excuse me, in front of my house, alongside of the rower tracks, there's already a dirt road there, to go to the Mountain House Byron intersection, would be safer, you know, because I live there, I'm the one that lives there, and it's just my concern, you know, getting in and out of my driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other council discussion at this point?
I just have a comment for...
Comment?
Yeah, regarding this, for clarification. I thought it had been said earlier that the city manager or staff would meet with the concerned parties, and go over, and explain everything, and answer the questions, because this is really not the form or the place to try and do that. This was, it was open for, for public comment, which we are way off protocol for what that's supposed to happen. But since it cannot be resolved here, it's no sense in taking up time for the what ifs, and you know, when you ask the question, I think, it's my understanding, I suppose, that means you have a lot of issues that not, have not been answered, so you can get the current plan from the developer and from our staff. So I'm sure that, I'd like to think that they'll make an appointment with all the concerned parties expeditiously, and sit down, so everyone's concerns will be answered, so everyone will walk away with clear understanding and clear head. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, if there are no further discussion, anybody want to make a motion? I don't know. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I'm making the motion to approve public hearing to affirm the intent to close the three existing at-grade rail crossings, and construction two at-grade crossing, consistent with the California Utilities Commission application.
Okay, anybody want a second?
I would like to, could I amend his proposal? No?
Can you? You could.
I just, I would go with his proposal, however, I would ask that maybe we delay it a little bit, to give them an opportunity to discuss it with...
Well, then you're not, then you're not amending his proposal, you're, you're going against his proposal.
Okay, I'm not necess, well, I'm not necessarily going against it, because I think that this, I think we need to move forward with the project, but I do feel like, maybe we should give them an opportunity to...
So you either move forward with the project today, or you block the moving forward? You can choose one or the other.
Mayor?
You can't make a...
Can I ask that we take a 10-minute recess for staff to download them on the plan, and then return, once we see whether they're...
10 minutes? No, we, yeah. So, and I don't want to sit here for 10 minutes, waiting for them to, so again...
I mean, I don't want to delay the project either, but if 10 minutes is enough to appease somebody's qualms, then...
Hold on, hold on, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? If there's no second, then the motion is dead. Is there a second? Okay, this does not pass, because we don't have a motion and a second, right?
That, that's correct. If you, if it doesn't pass, you're not adopting the resolution to confirm it. You did hold the public hearing, as far as I know, the staff is going to proceed with the CPUC proceeding, until directed otherwise, but we were asking you to confirm your intent to proceed, so unless Dave or Kusan has any concerns...
So at this point, then, we are not confirming?
Well, we have, we have three other points on the agenda, right? Mr. Mayor?
What do you mean you have three other points?
We have three other points, and we have a deputy city manager, who is more than well-versed with Kusan, that could take apart this, take this party aside, to the lobby or upstairs, and explain, and we could bring this back before we close the items eight.
That is not protocol.
I have a question.
Okay, Tingle.
I have a question. It seems as though, for this whole proposal, the only portion of it that's in question is the closing at Henderson. So is it a possibility to approve it with excluding Henderson out, to make a decision at a later time?
Well, there's, there's presently, there's presently a proceeding at the CPUC to adopt, or to open the two new crossings, which are much safer than what is out there right now, that's why this is being pursued, and it's consistent with the Mountain House master plan. What the family is talking about is not consistent with the Mountain House master plan in terms of planning. And so closing the existing crossings is part of those proposals that are pending at the CPUC.
So it has to be complete package, is what you're saying?
It's all together.
Okay, so the, the long answer was, is what you just said, the short answer is that you can't...
They're all together.
They're all together, thank you. I like short answers, by the way.
My apologies.
Mr. Mayor? And no offense to the Akhtar family, I completely hear your concerns, I'm very well-versed in this, in the development, and how this has gone, this has not been a cloak-and-dagger meeting with the council and developers, we've all been brought up to speed on regular updates. This is part of the master plan, that's 22, almost 22 years running. So with that being said, I do appreciate your concerns, at this time, there is, you can't really, you can't really compare it to an Aria Market, because there is no Aria Market there. So with that being said, I would like confirmation from staff, and it is my understanding that this isn't something that's going to detour you 5.1 miles, except for maybe a couple hours or a day while the transition happens, that all of this will happen at once, but in order for us to get approved for the new build, they don't issue new crossings, that's the major issue, is, in order to get a new crossing, they have to approve the closure and replace that, they don't let you add new. And that's the issue that we're having right now, is we can't proceed with the master plans and future development over the, over the, and as your, even neighbors who do live there are concerned, I, I understand, there does appear to be a road that that unfortunately belongs to the Southern Pacific Railway, so we don't have the means of redirecting the road. So at this time, given what I've been advised of, of this project, the timeline of the changeover, the difference of .75 miles, not 5.1, for no more than a day while this changes, I'm going to have to support advancing this, and I do ask staff to please follow through, and settle these concerns, and appease them, whether or not we are able to make contact, that's not their fault, there's tax information and things on the property, where all these should be advanced, if we can't reach and make contact with them, to make them aware of this transition happening. So just saying that we couldn't get ahold of them, there's tax filings, I'm sure, I can spend two minutes here, do a background check and a property pull...
How about you don't?
So, anyway, not my, not my business, not my job, not my pay scale.
Okay.
I'm going to second the motion to approve this, on the condition of what we've been told by staff on the turnover.
Hold on, I would need a new motion, right, because the first one didn't, this, anyone want to make a new motion at this time?
So I'll make a new motion to approve...
8.2, don't read it.
8.2, based on what we've heard here today, and what staff is promising to the property owners to follow up, so that everyone is in very clear con... owners to follow up so that everyone is in very clear confluence of how this transaction is going to happen.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Your mic wasn't on, but you got it, right?
Correct.
Oh, aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
Let's move on to 8.3. We have an appointment to the San Joaquin County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. Margaret?
Staff is recommending that, or staff, the subcommittee that interviewed the applicants for the County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board is recommending the appointment of Linda Salvage. The city issued a recruitment notice seeking applicants to represent the city and, on the San Joaquin County, that's a mouthful, the San Joaquin County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees. The position is a four-year term with no term limits and compensation is paid by the San Joaquin County Mosquito and Vector Control District of up to $100 per attended meeting. The district board oversees programs to prevent and control vector-borne diseases, implements mosquito and vector control measures, and manages resources that support public health protection. Applicants required to be mountain house residents and registered voters, and they'll be required to submit an app, and they had to submit an application, and they'll be required to complete a Form 700 upon appointment. Applications were received through the clerk's office. Interviews were conducted by an ad hoc interview subcommittee that was appointed by the city council to evaluate applicants and make recommendations for appointment. Following the completion of interviews, the subcommittee recommended Linda Salvage for appointment based on her qualifications and understanding of public health issues and commitment to community service. And staff will coordinate with the appointee to provide periodic updates to the city council on district activities and actions or issues that may affect mountain house residents. And again, the recommendation is to appoint Linda Salvage to the San Joaquin County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2029, 2029, that seems a long time from now. Any questions? And I believe that Ms. Salvage is here in the audience as well if you have questions for her.
Council questions on the left, council questions on the right. No council questions. Public comments. The public is invited to make a comment on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. No comments? Let's move on to... I know what I'm doing. Yeah, let me actually get it out. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve or appoint Linda Salvage to the San Joaquin County Mosquito Abatement and Vector Control District.
I'll make a second for honorary entomophile.
What?
It's somebody who loves bugs.
I actually know Linda from way back. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
8.4, oh.
That's what I wanted to do, make a comment.
What?
I wanted to make a comment about this appointment.
You, you missed the opportunity.
That's what I was trying to get in, but never mind. Anyway, Linda, I want to just say Linda is an excellent appointee for this position. She's passionate about it, and I think this was a perfect fit. And I'm so glad that she stepped up to be part of this committee. She's already engaged and has wonderful ideas. And I think that, and I thank her for coming forth and being part of, of this, this committee. I think we will be well-served by her. She has wonderful questions, and thank you. I know you'll do well.
All right. Now we move on to 8.4, Strategic Plan Update, fiscal years 2025-26 to 2627. Pinkerton?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just a reminder that you approved our two-year strategic plan back in April, and it really guides the, our part, wow, that a signal to us there? And it, it, it really prioritizes how we do your work on your behalf over the next two years. And as you recall, we had, we had a strategic planning session, and we had public meetings on this as well. And it's here to keep us accountable and make sure that we're keeping up with what your priorities are. We had, and part of that plan was to provide you with quarterly updates. And so we did our first quarterly update back in August, and now we've got quarterly update number two. I'll give you some real brief overviews of how things are going. You can see we have our nine key areas. We continue to do a lot of work on the incorporation transition. You've heard a lot about the general plan, housing element, all the other things we need to do as a brand-new city. On the development side, you got a presentation last meeting on economic development. We'll be following up with you on that at our next meeting or the meeting after, depending on the size of the agenda. Also doing a lot of work on the recreation center and, of course, everything going on around town hall from a development standpoint. We did get the fire station completed and fully staffed. The traffic safety plan's been adopted. And we're doing a lot of work right now on our security camera system, both the existing and the expansion. We talked about unmet transit needs regarding transportation at our last meeting, and continue to work with COG to secure funding for transportation. A lot of people ask, well, gee, what do we get now that we're a city? We get a lot more money for transportation, for one thing. We also get a lot more ability in DC when it comes to asking for money on water. We did, you've had a lot, we've had a lot of discussion with you recently on making sure we've got sustainable water supply in the future. On fiscal sustainability, one of those is making sure that we have, we're able to cover the cost of our utilities. And we had a very well-attended utility rate forum last week where we had a lot of good discussion with the public. And we continue to work on other things related to fiscal sustainability. Be talking about that a lot more in the spring as we approach budget season. On communications, as you know, our communications plan is, is now in place. Our new and improved website makes its debut three weeks from today. Our Ask the City tool is being used extensively, and we continue to add more videos so we can do as much as we can to educate the public with our online presence. Let's see, I think we've got one more. Yes, one more. We continue to, we continue to meet on a next slide. We continue to meet on a regular basis with the city council. We continue to provide these updates. We continue to communicate on a regular basis with Lammersville, and we're working on more discussions related to code enforcement and facility rental policies later in this fiscal year. So we think we're in pretty good shape, and we'll come back to you again with another quarterly update in the spring.
Questions? No questions? All right. I don't know why we put this one in action item. Public is invited to make comments on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. No public comments? Okay, opposed public comments. Oh, we need to make a motion to approve your recommendations?
I think just to approve that, the update, that's all.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the update for this strategic plan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Moving on to 8.5, Amendment to City Council Policies and Procedures Regarding Vice Mayor Appointment. John Bacher.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to handle this one. This is a proposal from you, actually, to, to possibly amend the city council policies and procedures to establish a structured rotation system for appointing the vice mayor. Next slide, please. So again, this was prepared at the mayor's request. Under the government code, your, the council is required to appoint one member of the city council to serve as the mayor pro tem, or we usually call it vice mayor, to serve when the mayor is absent or unable to act. In July, when the city was formed, the vice mayor was appointed, Councilmember Bernice Tingle, and she served since that time as the vice mayor. Next slide, please. What's being proposed is a rotation system that would be based on the, when you were elected and also the number of votes you received. So the basic structure that's being proposed is the person that was the highest vote getter in, whose term is about to expire, would expire at the next election, would be, would be the vice mayor in even numbered, in the next, in even-numbered years. And the second highest vote getter, that would be.
Well, they'd be appointed in the even-numbered year for that.
Correct. So it's, it's a structured system based on when, when your term is about to end and whether you received the most or the least number of votes. And the structure is based on the fact that two council members are up for reelection every two, every four years. So there's a cycle. So if your term's not up, you're not in the rotation, but when the next election occurs, then you're in the rotation for the, for the next cycle. So with that, here's a, here's a sample rotation schedule. If you look at this, the way this is structured, Vice Mayor Tingle is in the first row. Her council term expires in 2026. And then you can see the cycle up here, that the next highest vote getter, vote getter that is, whose seat is expiring in 2026 would be in the rotation for the next one, and so on and so forth. So that's the proposal. The text of the, of the change to the city council policies and procedures is set out in the agreement, I'm sorry, in the staff report. And we would ask you to consider the proposed policy and consider adopting it.
Any council questions?
I have a question.
Tingle.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Sue. My question is that the, the current procedure, why the change? Is that not working where if anyone is interested in being a vice mayor that comes before the council, is either the mayor can appoint, not appoint someone to be voted on. My major concern is that in the rotation, and ideally a rotation would sound like a good idea, but there could be instances going forward where a person who's on council may, the schedule may not permit. They may not be interested in serving with time constraints or what have you. But I was wondering what the major benefits are. Is it to keep everyone in rotation or just assuming that everyone would want to serve and have the time to serve? And my question is that why are we changing now? What's the major concern that just is even put this up for consideration?
Because there's a election, or there's a potential change coming up next month. So that's, this would be the time to propose a change to that, you know, that we would normally have an election.
What change?
Well, in December, we normally vote for a new vice mayor. So that, this is the time to propose a change if we don't want, if we don't like that procedure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was unclear. I was wondering why the change in the procedure historically, and we do have a little history, we weren't always a city, that it would be the same thing as though you were doing a, a vice president. It was something that people had a show of interest. And I guess my major concern, which I will try to make clearer, is that it, going forward, going forward, it may not be everyone's aspiration to want to fill the seat of vice mayor for various reasons. And now you're forcing or putting someone in a position where, coming into office, I'm going to have to serve this timeframe, and that may not be the person's inclination. Because normally, it's been a show of interest. Are you interested in taking this assignment? Because there is responsibility that goes with this. It's not, it's, it's, it's stepping in when the, when an elected mayor or the mayor or whoever is not in place is having the time, the, the inclination and that desire. So I was just wondering, again, why is it that the prior procedure was that there would be a show of interest from an individual, that this is something that I'm interested in doing, and then the council in itself would give a, give a, a vote of confidence that yes, we want this person to serve?
This, this is just an option. Obviously, if the majority of the council doesn't like this option, we wouldn't move forward with this. But if the majority of the council wants this option, then, then that's the majority, that's the will of the council. So it's just an option that was presented to me that would eliminate some issues about, you know, voting and lobbying. So again, it's an option. If nobody wants this option, then we'll kill it on the spot. But if people think it's reasonable, then let me hear some other people's. Disco next, and then Harrison.
So this takes the bloodbath out of it, because I feel like in my past three years, everybody wants it. And it turns into a little bit of a rowdy kind of challenge, and then there's some animosity that carries over, depending on who wins or who loses. But I wasn't in favor of the way we appointed it to begin with. And I'm, I'm, I'm more than open for hearing how the rest of the council feels, but I, I haven't been on the council as long as the mayor and mayor pro tem, but I don't know historically, has there been anybody who declines and says that they don't want it? I think I may have once and said I wasn't interested, so don't even waste your vote on me because there's other people who are more passionate about it. But if you sign up to do public service, and there's a contingency like this at the next election, and everybody who's currently on this election gets a chance for a seat, if it comes times for whoever seated is next that doesn't want it, I'm pretty sure we can revisit again and change it the way we're changing it right now. So I'm, I'm supportive of this because I feel like it's an even fair share of everybody who comes into play, and it also vets whoever would be appointed into this role to serve a minimum of two years while the incumbents going out are taking their turns.
One, one year, yeah.
So one year each. But what I'm saying is, if elections are every four years, and there's a mayor appointed for that four-year term, and there's four terms available for mayor pro tem, and there's four council members, unless it becomes an issue where somebody doesn't want it because of obligations outside of their duties on this council, it makes perfect sense to me that anybody coming in new isn't going to be thrown into the hot seat and expected to perform these duties without two years of experience at this size.
Exactly. And, and to be fair, let me just make a quick comment, and then Harrison, and then Green. The vice mayor or pro tem, I mean, there's not a ton of duties unless like the mayor gets shot or something. I mean, if I'm at every meeting, there's no, there's no real, you know, there's not a huge obligation. You know, when we have an event and I don't get to go, yeah, the vice mayor goes up, but so does a lot of the council members. So again, I, I just don't think it's something worth fighting for every year when you, we can just rotate, you know. That's, that was my thought. Let me hear Harrison and then Green.
Yeah, I just, you know, Mayor, you, you say that, that, you know, I don't think the vice mayor has to really do much, but, you know, being a new city, it is important, and I believe having the experience too. And in the past, we have had folks that we didn't vote on for a particular reason, because they didn't have the experience. So that's, that's my thing. I, I understand. It seems like a, a good system to have. I just don't think we're ready at this point for, just because of how new we are with the city and the responsibility that it would take for a vice mayor. Down the road, I think it, it may work, but at this point, I, I just, I think experience-wise too plays a huge factor in it.
Well, if experience is always the, the, the most important, then we should have the same vice mayor for the next four years. Green? I mean, you're the most experienced.
I think, I, I support it. However, I think we all have the same experience as city council people, because we all started at the same time. So I don't necessarily think it's about just who has the most experience, but I do think that it is a good idea. And then And then, but my question is, is that in the event the person that's up next doesn't want the position, then could it go to the next person in line if they feel like they don't want to be vice mayor? Or, you know, something like that? The experience thing, I don't go with that, because we've all been council the same time. But could we give it up?
Or you could say, if your turn is up and you don't want it, then we vote. You know, but otherwise, everybody, this, this ensures everybody gets an opportunity to serve as, you know, vice mayor. You know, the other side, Councilman Harrison, that's negative. If, for example, you have a voting block on, you know, it's not like the vice mayor gets any more money or any more power. But if you had a voting block, you could control the vice mayor for the next four years. So then nobody else would get a chance. And maybe that's okay. But this is the opposite of that. This gives everybody one year. You know, instead, again, I, I, I love Bernice, but I just don't see that, you know, it's a huge responsibility. You know, how many times has the mayor missed a meeting?
You only missed a half meeting, however.
This meeting?
This, this whole year, maybe just a half a meeting.
Half a meeting? I don't even remember that. So again, it's just an option, some, someone suggested to me, and I thought, you know, so I wanted to see what you guys all thought about it.
Okay, so this was suggested to you.
You have another comment?
So why don't we let the people decide? So if we're gonna do, if, you know, if we, if we want to decide who we vote for, I mean, it's not like with CSD, you have to elect the president and vice president. This isn't that format. This is an emergency format that's yet to be exhausted. It doesn't carry any additional duties. But I always thought, from the time we started, and no ego intended, but if the voter elects a mayor, and the voter elects a council member, and the mayor reigns supreme on the votes, and the top council member reigns supreme on the council seat, why wouldn't we follow the protocol of what the voters want for who they elect up in these seats and default that top respondent, whether it's me, Dan, Bernice, Rana? Why don't we automatically appoint that way every two years?
Well, because this way.
I mean, I'm just flipping this. I just want to flip everyone's script here, right? Like, if, 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 let's take our egos out of it. Let's put it back on the public we're serving, right? If we're serving the public and they top elect somebody, that's because they instill trust in that person. And I'm not, yes, I currently hold that position. But my ego aside, everything else aside, we're all talking about here about who wants to have the ego seat. It's literally an ego seat. There is no responsibility that that duty fulfills on a daily or monthly basis without the mayor not sitting at the helm of this dais. So again, I support this. I feel this is a fair and balanced process where we don't have these arguments that we're having right now about who deserves. There's no side room chat about who wants it or who supports who, because then we're really getting into murky water. So I, I think we all need to make a decision here, because the current way it's working, it's like whoever throws the biggest fit is the one who gets it. And I threw a fit last time, and I didn't get it. So this is me maybe throwing a little fit now, because I didn't get it. But at the same time, it's not my decision, it's not the voter's decision, it's the council's decision. So I entertain this. I think this is a fair and balanced process that eliminates all that ego drama. And whoever doesn't want it, we revisit it then. But at this point, it's my understanding that everybody wants it. And I don't want to have this drama every year in the middle of holidays when the stress and tensions are already high at the end of the year. So that's, I'm gonna end with that.
Response?
Oh, it's not responding to Councilman Disco. My, my response is that during this conversation now, since we do try to honor the Brown Act, I didn't realize there was so much undercurrent going. So going forward, this could be a very good idea if there was, if knowing that there's one caveat in place. And that is that when, on this automatic rotation from now on, that it would be rotated, whoever is in office will get a, a seat to be, stand in place if the mayor is not here, the elected mayor is not here. That would be fine. But I think it still has to be in place that if someone says, due to my schedule, ability to, to be a backup in case the mayor's not here, they can have the option of saying, no, I don't want to serve. And then it would probably then, a process of going to the next person in order. Because you don't want to lock in anyone in a, in a position that they may not want to be in. And one thing that is nice is that our, our current mayor, who was voted in to lead, to lead our city with experience and what have you, his schedule now permits that he is around and makes most things. And serving as your vice mayor for the last year and a half, there's been a few things that I, not at the dais, but some things that go out as we serve the, the public. When he can't make things there, but it's also brought to bear that other council members have the, the right to go and represent the, the city. So I can be all right with, with that. And this is probably the first time, if you go with the rotation of everyone being in, following the schematic that was put up, it would be myself. So it almost is following in order then. I had the, the highest vote getters of the two-year.
Yeah.
And then it would be Green, Green next. But there's one thing that I do want to say is that as we grow, we are a new council. However, the, and I want to make that very clear, that even though we, a council and a board member, the job responsibilities are basically the same, except we take on more than the 18 powers, this other thing. So it's a learning curve for everybody. And that's why training is so important, that all council members go to training so you can do the best by the city, and that is a commitment. And I'm gonna stop there, because that's outside of the scope. I can support this with that caveat that you don't make anybody take that. But I had no idea that this was, being vice mayor was an ego thing. I thought the job was to serve, not to get caught up in your own self-worth.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment? Then, did I already do public comments? I did. I didn't? All right, we're open up for public comments, and the public is invited to make comments on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, except nobody submitted anything. So we'll bring it back to the council. Oh, coming up. Ard Nagardan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and vice mayor and the council. See, we voted for mayor, based on the experience. We want experienced people to be in the board, right? And we voted for that. And I expect that, that 18 powers plus extra things, that is what we got in the council. So I just support some of these things, because experience is required. Thanks.
Huh? Okay. Now I bring it back to the council. Anybody want to discuss anymore, or do you want to make a motion? Discussion or motion? Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 8.5.
Can I get a second?
I'll gladly second.
Roll call, I guess.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Nay.
Mayor Sue?
Well, I guess that's why they make me last. I guess I brought this in, so yes.
Motion carries, 3-2.
Okay, we're moving on to 9.1. It's a traffic and transportation project update. Kusan.
Yes, Mayor, council, yes. This project, this presentation regarding the traffic transportation update, it's gonna be very brief. The first project is about traffic signal synchronization project. This is, this is going to be the project along the Mountain House Parkway. There are several existing traffic signal, which will be communicating each other one click. That means that in the future, whenever we receive the green light first, and those vehicle keep receiving the green light to improve the efficiency. So we are expecting to complete the project spring 2026. Next. We climbed the village and Arturo Road Repair Project with new striping. So we have installed a new AC, asphalt, asphalt concrete, and also slurry seals, as well as the new cob and gutter. So that will, that has been completed. That was actually completed on July 31st. Next. This is a very important project, project for our community. HCC project, Highway Safety Improvement Program. So this is a federally funded program. But as you can see here, new bike facilities along Great Valley Parkway, Arturo Boulevard, and Main Street will be done. So I'm going to provide a little more details later. So next. Another HCC project on Central Parkway at Heritage Drive and Legacy Drive. We are going to add one more, two more flashing vehicles on each side. Side. Next. Now this is a little more details. We're adding two flashing vehicles for Legacy. And then we also adding some striping so that we can give some more alert to the drivers. Eventually, we will enhance the safety for our pedestrians. Next. Yeah, this is a Great Valley Parkway Bike Lane projects. So left exhibit, I mean, the exhibit on the left is from our master plans. So we are implementing the planned projects. So the first, the exhibit on the right indicating the existing condition. Two travel lanes for the northbound and southbound. But we are going to convert one travel lane to the bike lane with some buffer, buffer, as you can see over there. Next. Arturo, Main Street will follow very similar configuration. Next. So this is a very typical details for intersections. For example, there's a four-way intersection or three-way intersections. We are going to provide very unique colors so that we can provide a good alert to the drivers as well as the bikers. So one of the, the photos over there indicating the future bike facility. This project, traffic coming project, safety improvement, was triggered by some input from our resident. The school, Muella Ranch, and Traffic, and Tradition Street. We received a lot of concern from the resident and, I mean, the parents. And we conducted some assessment. We found that some additional high visibility crosswalk and some striping would be helpful. So we already completed this project for our resident. Next. So you might remember daylighting law effective January 1st, 2025. So we tackle Wickland Village, especially, it's called a hotspot around the school, school zones. We implemented daylighting law by painting the curb, as you can see here. Next. This is an ongoing traffic coming effort, especially Central Parkway. We have received some comments. We improved, we increased the traffic enforcement as well as our staff, maintenance crew install the message board. After we installed that one, we got a really good feedback from our resident that they are seeing the improvement. The speeding has been reduced. We will continue to monitoring the situation over there. Next. The two, this is a regional traffic improvement project roundabout. This, this project was already provided last council meeting. So one at the Grantline Road and Mountain House Road. Next. The second one is at Grantline and Atamon Pass. So the city has a scheduled traffic transportation workshop for Thursday, December 4th, 7:00 PM. So city staff will provide a lot of great information regarding the upcoming project, including the red light camera, some other project in the future. I can answer any question you may have.
Disco?
For the, for the, for the bike lane addition, what would the plans be for Main once we continue to pass through Town Hall, future home of yet-to-be-determined downtown strip when we continue it onto Central Parkway and Safeway? Would we include that in the development plan where it continues straight down Main, and then you gotta hop over a block to Safeway? Or would we reroute the bike lane since Arturo's never gonna go through? And Main is gonna go through, but it's a block off. So would we just divert a bike lane along Central Park and then out Giotta? Or what if, what if I want to ride my bike from west of Altamont, west side, west Altamont into Mountain House Parkway?
Yeah, that's why I, I showed the one, the proposed plan from master plan. Maybe you can go to another exhibit. So we are creating really good loop. So we don't want to send our bikers to the dead end. So if you take a look, the Great Valley Parkway, Arturo, and Main will be heading to the Central Parkway. The Central Parkway already has Class 1. So we want to connect a loop so that people can enjoy more bike with good safety measures.
But I, what I'm saying is, I would love to be able to ride my bike from this intersection pictured, a block over, to Safeway. I just don't feel safe doing it on Legacy. And I don't like riding my bike on the sidewalk. So what options would I have if I wanted to go down Main Street towards Town Hall? And when Central Park 3.0 continues, take Main Street? Are we gonna plan to extend this bike lane when we develop Central Park 3.0? Maybe I want to ride it to the pool, and then I want to go to Safeway to grab lunch or Starbucks, right? How am I gonna, am I gonna have a clear, safe path the way we're creating here in town to get to the edge of town to Safeway? Or even if I wanted to go over Central Park or Mountain House Parkway and continue on without going over the bridge and just have to go over the, the, the new crossing?
Yes, a future roadway, I mean, especially going to the Safeway, we are always looking for the opportunity for the completed street. It's not just for the vehicle, but also for the pedestrian and bikers. So we will make sure that we will have, provide really good, the safe route to the Safeway or any other location in the city.
I'm just saying, mainly for the kids, right? The kids are already using the dirt path on their own, mud or not. They're cutting through the field there. So.
Yes.
I just want to know if we're forward-thinking, like, what are we gonna do with it? Is it gonna extend out Main, or? Okay, thank you.
That's our goal.
The, the extension of Arturo, there's, as part of the master, as part of the pedestrian master, bike and pedestrian master plan, there is a pedestrian bridge that is in the master plan to go across Mountain House Creek. So when you, when you go down Arturo, you'd be able to connect into Raphael, you know, to Giotto, those streets to get to the back of Safeway. But it's gonna be a challenge once we get into those core shopping areas. You know, on Main Street, you can't really have a very good bike path if you have all these angle parking vehicles backing out into the street. But that's just the nature of when you're in a town center area that you'll, most of the bikes will want to divert to Central Park and the pedestrian bridge in that area, because Main Street's really a pedestrian street. It'd be very difficult to have, I'm not sure we have enough lanes to, to have bikeway on Main Street because of the angle parking in that area. But, you know, we'll look, we haven't designed the street beyond the, the rec center at this point in time.
Yeah, this is a part of the phase, the projects. So that's why there's a proposed, the master plans indicating several phases. So we want to tackle the, one of the major corridors, especially Great Valley and then Arturo, Main, so that we can make a really good, safe route for our resident.
Yeah, that's my only concern, is if we continue this down Main and we shove them a block over from Safeway, it's the kids who are gonna be using this, right? So, all right, thank you.
Really make sure. Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, let's advance the troops to 9.2. Steve?
Whoops, sorry, I was making notes on the bike and ped plan and making sure. Got that in there. So I'll go ahead to the next.
So I'll go ahead to the next slide. We, we've received a number of emails over the last month that we've responded to regarding some, some traffic safety proposals, some mosquito issues in the new neighborhoods, some safety concerns near Questa Elementary, and, and what's called the Tracy Earth Project, which is due with tree planting. We are looking into our policies and procedures for hiring practices at this time based on the feedback that we got last time. What we can publicly disclose, we'll be disclosing in the future. Next slide. We've got a lot going on in all our neighborhoods right now still. We've probably got 300, 200 to 300 houses under construction right now in, in both the north and south ends of town. If you, if you go down to College Park, you're going to see not only a park just about complete, pretty, if you drove down Deanza today, you can see that Deanza now south of Grantline Road looks like a real street. And the, the sound wall is now in on that portion between Prosperity and, and Deanza at this point in time on Grantline Road. So other than the project on the corner, you've got pretty much a completed Grantline Road at this point in time. And you've got most of the roads in for the Polte and Richmond Projects in what we call Neighborhood B678, which are those neighborhoods that are east of the existing College Park and south of Grantline Road. Pretty much all the roads are in for the residential at this point in time. And yeah, hopefully by next month, we'll have a date for a grand opening for our new park. And we're going to need to have a naming committee to confirm the name for the, for the new park and, and College Park. And in fact, south of the new park, Shea Homes is really building up so you can see more connectivity. There's going to be very soon a lot more connectivity between sort of that south half and north half of, of, of College Park. Up here just north of City Hall and adjacent Town Hall and adjacent to the creek, not only, you know, we have the public projects, private projects underway, but the, the last infill project in Questa on the west side, east side of the bridge to somewhere at this point in time. And then, of course, once you cross the bridge, a tremendous amount of activity. You're seeing not just the fire station up in Neighborhood K, but the first housing development now well under construction in Neighborhood K and in Neighborhood J. I think we've got, I think in Neighborhood K, we've got two neighborhoods and we've got nine neighborhoods in, under construction in Neighborhood J. And you're beginning to see some of the park space fill in. We're finalizing designs for Neighborhood J Park. And yes, we are including a restroom in the Neighborhood J Park. And to, to keep the mosquitoes down, obviously, as those lakes come in, you have to have circulation. And the first fountain was put in, I don't know if Dave's still here, he may have left. But our first, our first fountain was put in today to keep that water circulating in Neighborhood J. And it's actually lit up at night if you want to go by there in, in the evening in the, in that neighborhood. On the commercial side, Jody's been in close contact with Mustang Square. They just need M I D. to give them some power so they can wrap up over there at Mustang Square. And it looks like, which ones are coming in first again, Jody? Is it Chipotle, the gas station, Chipotle, Nectar Domino's? Right, and then the Indian Market and the Starbucks. I know everybody wanted Starbucks first, but Starbucks may lag behind a little bit on that center. Across the street, what we call the Sings Shopping Center Project. You know, they've, it looks like, you know, McDonald's and Circle K are very seriously looking at that location along with a larger version of the Indian Market on Tracy Boulevard. They're kind of leading that project and they've consolidated their ownership. So that should speed things up a little bit on that project, which is directly across the street from Mustang Square. But we're not seeing any action right now on the Wickland Crossing Project or the Hanson Village Shopping Center at this point in time, nor the daycare center up in Questa. I think financing is getting a lot tougher right now than it was a year or two ago. So some of these projects aren't proceeding as quickly as they had hoped at this point in time. Hopefully, you've seen our new coming soon signs around Town Hall. And we're working on those and some of the other developments now as well. We've got them right up there on the screen. You can see that, that's the amphitheater and tennis court coming soon signs that were just put in recently. In addition, back up a little bit, in addition, we've been getting a lot of inquiries again about the Mountain House Sports Center, you know, the pickleball and badminton. We think we're about 95% of the way there to ensure that that project can go forward. We just wanted to make sure that it would not create negative parking impacts for the balance of that center. And I think there's another industrial user moving into that center right now as well. So that, this would put it up, this project would put that building up to about 70% occupied, believe it or not. It's, it's over 50% occupied at this point in time. And again, we've got the Dog Park Tennis Complex moving along quickly along with the amphitheater, hopefully Dog Park and Tennis Complex in the spring and the amphitheater by summer. Next slide. So that, that can show, I like that photo on the left. You can see how many different housing projects are going on up north of Byron right now. I think you count 11 or 12 different projects underway, still wrapping up some projects on the bridge. I know we had some questions today about traffic signals. While COVID is over, we still have a lot of supply chain issues on traffic signals. We're hoping that the traffic signals on Central at Main and Arturo will be underway in January and hopefully Nazar Goli not long after that. So I know that's a big issue. That's why we really push, as you know, for the crossing bar program in College Park because that is the only neighborhood where you've got a, a major street bisecting the neighborhood. And so that's why it's been such a priority to, to get that signal done. The problem was when they wrote the conditions for that signal, it really required that, that next project that's under construction now, that's what triggered the developer requirement to spend all the money on that traffic signal. But thankfully, they are expediting that process to make sure that signal gets in as soon as possible. In addition, a lot of work still going on on, when you hear the rain, making sure everything can drain on the east side of town. That's always very important. And working on pump stations in the Lake District as well because that's the one neighborhood that's actually below the sewer plant. Everything else can flow down to the sewer plant except for the Lake District where the sewage has to flow up. And just a couple of photos for you here. Chipotle is right on the edge of, of, of being ready. And I think with Chipotle drive-throughs, I think you have to call ahead, right? You can't do it at the, I think with Chipotle, the drive-through is only for pickup, right? Not for order at that point in time. So things are getting close on communications. You can see we continue to get a lot of new followers across all of our platforms. We're up to almost half a million views. And we're working on a, a new welcome guide for our neighbors, hopefully both a virtual and, so that we can have kind of a virtual welcome wagon to let people know all about, all the exciting things about Mountain House. And particularly, of course, the master restrictions. But all the things that they signed in escrow that they didn't read, we want to make sure they're all educated on. And again, as we mentioned earlier, three more weeks and we've got the new website. HR, we've got interviews on management analysts. We've hired a rec coordinator and rec assistant, wrapping up the class and comp study. And from a staffing standpoint, because you know, we have about a quarter of the staff of, of a typical organization as we're trying to keep things lean and mean. So NeoGov is going to make our hiring process much more, I think, efficient than it has been in the past and making it much easier for follow-up. And we're already seeing far more applications for all the positions because if you're already a NeoGov customer, so to speak, because NeoGov is used by most city platforms, it's a much easier process to apply if you already have a NeoGov account. So we're, for some of these positions, we've seen a lot more qualified applications than we've seen in the past. In finance, you're going to have the annual audit coming to you next month along with the AB 1600. They have a lot of fiscal year-end things they're wrapping up to get done by the end of the year. And the new exciting thing that they have this year that I get to hear about from finance is the fact that now that we have all these other grants coming in from S J cog and Caltrans, that's lots more work for the auditors as well. Because not only do we have to audit our books, but we've got other government entities that give us money that have standards that we have to meet for our audits as well. So it's getting far more complex than when we were a C S D. On Parks and Rec, I think Umar is still here. The, the Unity Center was very spooky for Halloween. I think those, that's one time those low ceilings in the Unity Center come in handy is when you're dressing it up for, for Halloween, I think. And so we had some, we had a great event over there for Halloween. Tennis court use is up. And of course, we had a ton of special events in October and November over at Central Park. And we should mention that we now have, as you know, we do track attendance at all these events because that comes in handy to make sure that there was proper, that, that when we look at an event in the following year, we want to make sure that, that we had an idea of how many people were there so we have proper security for that event. And I believe there was an event, what, Matt, 11 days ago that broke our record for attendance, correct? And I think we, we were over, there were over 5,000 unique visits to the November 1st event. And that's a new record for Mountain House.
We've added a cameo appearance by Bon Jovi. Compliments of the sponsorship from the mayor.
Yes, I heard a lot about that, so. And, and so as, as we get into the holiday season and start focusing on the indoor events, don't forget about our parade of lights and our light up of Main Street coming up. And wow, less than a month, tree lighting is at 6:45 on December 6th. A breakfast with Santa the following weekend over at the Unity Center. Are you sold out yet? Are you getting close? And I, so just remember, you got to get your tickets well ahead of time for that. And in utilities, just a reminder that our, our, when you, our solid waste contract has annual increases and the next annual increase comes in in January, which was consistent with the contract you approved a couple years ago. Our wastewater is looking pretty good these days as far as flu, COVID, those sorts of things. No, no spikes to speak of. We'll hopefully be getting back to you soon on those communication towers that might actually help with other things other than just emergency communications in the future. And don't forget that on December 2nd, we have the ribbon cutting at Bethany Playground, at the new and improved Bethany Playground. Pirate suits are optional for that, pirate outfits are optional for that day. But bring your, bring your eye patches for that one. And I thought I might turn it over to Councilmember Harrison to talk about the event that was here this past Saturday.
Thank you, City Manager. Yeah, I wanted to thank the staff for hosting our veteran luncheon. We had quite a few people that attended. It was very well attended. And I wanted to thank the Legion too for, out of Tracy who did our honor guard. But again, everybody involved, it was real successful. We had it on us this past Saturday. Because in years past, we actually would have it on the 11th. But a lot of folks don't get that day off on Veterans Day. So we moved it to the Saturday and it seemed to work real well. So again, I wanted to thank the staff for tremendous job that they did. It was very well received. So thank you.
And we have a lot of other volunteers to thank as well. I believe the chamber helped out with that as well. That's right. No one told me.
Future agenda items?
We have a very busy agenda potentially coming up in December. We, we had some items that we'd hoped to get to this month, but oftentimes there's third parties that also have to sign off on these documents and hopefully it'll get pulled up soon. But again, don't forget that December 2nd is the ribbon cutting out at Bethany. And remember on the 24th, you're in, two weeks from day 26, you're not having a meeting. So December 2nd, we've got the ribbon cutting at Bethany at 4 o'clock. Then we have our, we have a much more detailed presentation, interaction with the public on December 4th on, on transportation. And then we have all the holiday events on December 6th. Yak on December 9th, their holiday meeting. And then we've got a whole number of items we're working to get set up on the 10th. We'll come back to you with, for example, the count, proposed council schedule for 2026, the audit, hopefully a development code update that evening. We're hoping that cog just has a couple, I think, Ts. to cross and we can bring back the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Transfer to you next month as well. You had provided the Parks and Rec Manager with your input on a sponsorship policy. She's hoping to have the final policy based on your feedback back to you next month. The red lights that you talked about tonight, we'll be bringing back the service contract for that at the next meeting, the vice mayor selection, of course, is always in December as well. We're hoping to have the fire station antenna contract back as well. And then we have some on-call services consent items as well at the next meeting. And then our next meeting, luckily, the, the, the second Tuesday in January is until the 14th. So we've got plenty of time for the holidays to get prepared for the January 14th meeting. And we wanted to put January in here to remind you that we've scheduled prior to the January 14th meeting at 5:30, council training session on Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which, as you know, is the, which is the, the chosen method we have for the conduct of the council meeting, so our parliamentary procedure, so to speak. So we've been getting requests for that from the council. And so we checked with everybody and it looks like 5:30 prior to the next meeting, or prior to the January meeting is when we would have that training here in the council chambers. And we've got an expert from Sacramento coming to provide the training. I couldn't get Mr. Rosenberg himself though. He's fully retired as a judge now. He used to be a Davis City Councilman. So happy to answer any questions.
Nope, questions? All right, let's move on to 12 or 11. Councilmember comment? Harrison, no?
Yes. Thank you very much for the updates. One of the things that I'd like to, to just say right now, for the month of December, I take the meeting remote. I always go out of town with my family for three weeks. So I'll be taking that meeting remote and giving the staff the location of where I'll be. So it'll be posted. It's always the same. The meeting that's scheduled for December the 4th for transportation, I would encourage all of my fellow council members to, to be there. It's always good to have someone there to support the staff as they're speaking to the public and the public really appreciates, especially if anything that it's, it's going to be in a little hot water. It's always good to have someone there for staff with, to support some of the decisions that we make, to be there to take the fire. The other thing is that for upcoming events, I'd like to have it considered for calendar to talk about the budget for conferencing and training for the council. The one I'm specific, speaking of specifically, Mayor, if you would consider putting that up for discussion, is the One Voice Trip. I want to make a comment on that. Last year I did go. It's focused, it's One Voice focused on transportation. And to my dismay, it was the first time we were a city and participating in that. But to my dismay, they only wanted to hear one voice. So I'd like for us to consider not spending upward of 30 grand for the council to go when they're only going to listen to one voice and you're not able to make all the meetings. Because when I went last time, fully prepared to talk about our project, a muzzle was put on my mouth and you guys had to pay for it. Thank you.
Green?
Yes, thank you. I would, on this coming Monday, the Browfee Salon here in Mountain House, we're actually going to do a collaboration with their salon and people from my salon in Fremont are going to come down. And what we're doing is for the federal workers that have been working for 40 days for basically not getting paid but still having to show up at work, we're going to offer them a free shampoo, blow-dry haircut or whatever, just to try to make them feel just a little better about what has been going on. So I would love to invite the community to come out, to support, to come get some snacks. It's from 10 to 6. There's other hairstylists that are going to come help support this endeavor too. So I would welcome you guys to come. Thank you.
Ms. Prodisco?
Always, thank you. I want to congratulate all of the staff, the posts, fellow council members and mayor for the exceptional event hosted on Saturday for the Veterans Day Luncheon. I've been to a few. This one blew everything out of the water, just huge step up on game, much larger room for attendance, opening it up to the general public. The flow of events, organization, attention. The flow of events, organization, attention and detail were second to none. So that was by far a better experience than years past. And now that we're a city, it reflects well on our community. So not only for our veterans, but also for the community members who came out to support them. So, and it was an honor for the chamber to be able to support where we could. And again, thank you all staff and participants for dedicating your Saturday to make this happen. Your hard work truly showed. So thank you. And happy Thanksgiving, because this is our last meeting in November.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything this evening.
Oh, shucks. City Manager?
Nothing additional.
What day are we coming back? December? 10th? All right. Meeting adjourned. Yeah, yeah. Hey, Steve? You'll add that item about the One Voice Trip? Okay.